So it's 5:15. This is the District One Meeting and Caucus. There are a couple of priorities of what we are trying to do tonight. The first is we need to choose a district chair. And the second is to appoint town meeting members for District One. There are currently seven open seats in this district. So the goal is to appoint people for a one-year term. If there is time after that, if members of the district would like to have conversations about articles on the warning for representative town meeting, you all can certainly do that. There is a hard stop for this, for District One's Meeting and Caucus at 5:45. At that time, you will all be asked to leave the meeting and rejoin at 7:30 for the information session. If you are not an elected town meeting member for District One, I'll ask that you leave this meeting and call in instead. And the purpose of that is to make sure that there's integrity of the vote when we do polls. Only elected town meeting members in this district should be voting. If you're an elected town meeting member in a different district, you can leave and come back at the appropriate time for your district's town meeting member, for your, for your district's caucus and meeting. And so folks who are on, if you need the phone number, it's listed on our website, but you can also call a toll-free number, which is 833-548-0282. And if you need to unmute or unmute yourself, you can do so by pressing star six if you're on the phone, and to raise and unraise your hand on the phone, it's star nine. So that being said, I would ask if there are any nominations for chair for District One. And if you just raise your hand through the raise hand function, we can go from there and I'll call on you. We'll take nominations and then we'll choose from there. So I see Rick Morton with a hand raised. Patrick, can you please recognize him? Hi, Rick. Do you have a nomination? Sorry, you're muted. We can't hear you.
I'd like to put my name forward as a husband or that chair position.
Okay, so we have Rick Morton as a nominee. Are there, is there a second for Rick's nomination of himself? I see Aaron Smith with a hand raised. Patrick, can we recognize Aaron, please? Thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for District One Chair? If there are, just go ahead and raise your hand through the raise hand feature. Going once. Going twice. I don't see any hands. Do you, Patrick? Okay, so with only one nominee for Chair of District One, the way that we handled this last year is based on the nominations being only one person, we will elect that person Chair unless anybody objects to that because there's not numerous nominations. So I would ask right now if anybody objects to Rick Morton being elected Chair of the District One District for a one-year term. I'm just going to give folks a second to raise their hands. Should there be any objections? Seeing none. Okay, Rick, you. Oh. So Rick, oh, wait, I see Emily Kornheiser with a hand up.
Sorry, that's a button. Not an objection. I just wondered if you could describe what the responsibilities of the District One Chair were.
Yeah, so ultimately, the Chair leads these district caucuses. And then if there are any other district meetings that may come up throughout the year, which historically there haven't really been any, but we're seeing more of them pop up in some of the other districts, they would call that meeting and sort of facilitate and run that meeting. Generally, when these caucuses are held in person, I'm actually not in them at all. And the district Chair will call that meeting. They'll hold the election of the Chair going forward. They'll hold the caucus in terms of appointing any, anybody who's interested in being appointed for a one-year term. Beyond that, that's the extent of my knowledge of the responsibilities. I would ask Chris Chapman if he has anything to add to that. And I would also remind folks, if you are not a voting member of this district, please leave this caucus. I am seeing at least one or two people who are not in District One. Please leave this meeting and come back at the appropriate time for your district's meeting. So Chris Chapman, do you mind raising your hand so Patrick can recognize you so you can fill in anything that I may have missed?
Can you hear me and see me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, in addition to leading the meeting and, and really presiding over the voting on who the new district Chair is and leading the voting nominees to fill the one-year slots in order to bring up the, hopefully to fill up the number of representative, representatives to town meeting from District One. It's really you, the Chair of the caucus, who does most of the lifting to scout up those, those one-year candidates. You have to scramble between the election day and the caucus date to find some names. I had about 10 names, but I was unable to actually get anybody to come forward. The length of the town meeting has been discouraging to prospective members. But that's, that's the only, the only other thing in the three years or so I've been District One Chair. We've not had any special meetings, which would have been interesting. But fortunately, we've been spared from the Chinese curse. May you live in interesting times. So that's what I have to say. And thank you, Mr. Morton, for stepping up. I look forward to being a town meeting rep with you and everyone else.
Thanks, Chris.
Sure.
And just real quickly, there, like I said, there are a few people in the meeting that are not in this district. David Gartenstein, I'm going to have stay because he is the moderator and I know that he's observing and will not vote in any polls that come up. Bob Ozer, if you can leave this meeting and come back for the District Three meeting, that would be helpful. Thank you. So that being said, I see George Carville's hand up.
I'd just like to move. We thank Chris for his service as our chairman. Well done.
Thank you, George. Okay, so are there any objections to Rick Morton being elected Chair for District One for a one-year term? Again, without objection, Rick will be the Chair. And I just want to give people a chance if they have objections at this point. Seeing none, congratulations, Rick. You are the Chair of District One. And seeing that we didn't get a chance to talk in advance, I'm happy to help with whatever you need in terms of appointing people. That's the next step in the process. I don't see any phone numbers on, so I'm, I'm not, I'm guessing there's nobody that's stepping up. But I don't know if you or any other members of District One have heard of people that wish to be nominated that are not able to attend tonight.
No, as a matter of fact, I was just wondering if Chris could clarify some way that'd be convenient, whether this seeking out of people to be appointed is for next year prior to the caucus meeting. Because this year, of course, we're supposed to be dealing with that tonight. It sounds like so there's no time. Is there a drop dead date or is this the drop dead date?
So Rick, what I would say is in a normal year where we're not doing things technologically, we usually have a caucus just prior to the information session in person. And then if there's still a need to appoint, a caucus is usually held at 8:00 AM the morning of representative town meeting. And so you have an opportunity to appoint people there. It used to be that when the school was part, when the school district was part of representative town meeting, they, they would have an information session the week after hours. And there was another opportunity to caucus. That's now gone away because they're no longer part of representative town meeting. We have a unified school district. So, but because we do everything through Zoom the last few years, unfortunately, this is the opportunity. And so going into the caucuses, the previous Chair sort of coordinates anybody who wishes to be nominated. So unfortunately, this is the opportunity this year.
So there's no 8:00 AM Zoom meeting on the 19th that we work?
No, because we will need to do it through this Zoom link. And people will already be logging into RTM at that time. And Patrick and I need to sort of be on getting ready for that. We can't hold another meeting at the same time.
Do we need a consent of candidate agreement for appointing people?
No.
So in a sense, we could recommend from our group here, people we know who might be interested and then ask them later if they want to accept the appointment. Can we do that?
I suppose you could if you know somebody and then the folks from your district that are in here choose to appoint that person. You could do that. I don't know that that's ever been done before where you nominate somebody who hasn't expressed that they're interested. But that would be up to the district if that's the route you want to go.
I'm just asking questions because I'm kind of learning as I go here. And so appreciate your help on that. So Hillary, even though I'm, I'm the Chair now, I really feel that you're in the, you're rightfully in the driver's seat for this process because you're prepared. So maybe you could take us the next step, which is, I guess, appointing people if we had people to appoint. And I can just simply be in the background like everyone else.
Yeah, I would say if there are any nominee nominations for somebody to appoint, please raise your hand and you'll be recognized and we'll go from there. I'm not seeing any. Rick Morton, go ahead.
Okay, I was just pausing for other anyone else to respond. Can you tell me if a particular person I have in mind is a District One person?
Sure.
I'm thinking of Bill Steele. I think he had intended to be a town meeting rep, but I didn't see him listed. And he might be willing to accept that position.
So I'm not seeing him on my list for District One. He is a District Three Town Meeting Member.
Okay, okay, gotcha. All right.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing, Emily Kornheiser, go ahead.
Hi, I think Lee Marthy is usually here. Is she already a member and just not at this meeting?
I'm not seeing that she is a member, but I'm working on.
Sorry, Hillary.
Yeah, no worries. I'm just trying to pull up a database. And it's been giving me a hard time lately. I have to sort of rework it a little bit. So bear with me. I'm just going off of a spreadsheet that I have right now. And on that, I'm not seeing her. But I'm trying to pull up the database, so just bear with me. Okay, it doesn't seem to be working. So she's not on my spreadsheet, so I don't believe that she is currently a town meeting member. Oh, Patrick, can you, thank you.
Patrick, you're really quick with that mute button. Is Rick able to appoint people if we are in touch with them and have consent from them before the meeting in the, during sort of this two-week break?
I think that if you all vote to appoint somebody, then they would be appointed and then they could choose to resign or not show up to the meeting because it's just for a one-year term. Yeah, they don't have to be here in order to be nominated and appointed. But it's up to the district reps to decide whether or not they wish to appoint somebody who has not expressed interest in being appointed.
Thank you. And you said that already today. It's just the end of the day, so I'm sorry.
No worries.
I would like to nominate Lee Marthy.
Thank you. Rick, I see Chris Chapman with a hand up. Would you, do you wish to recognize him?
Oh, yes, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would just point out that in my experience as a rep in the caucuses, we have always asked that people who are interested in serving to actually appear at the caucus. There are people opined in previous caucus meetings that, that a person should be there to speak for himself or herself so that the caucus could essentially see the cut of their jib. And so it would be a departure from tradition if we were to vote tonight on someone who's not on this Zoom call. Not necessarily saying that, that object, but it is a departure from tradition. And, and we don't have actually any rules for this. There is no statutory set of procedures or conditions or anything else like that. It would be up to us to say whether or not we as a group, how we wish to proceed. So I think that in the absence of the candidate who's been nominated, we should ask the person nominating that person to say something about that candidate. And, and if the people present wish to move ahead with a, with an appointment, they should vote yes. And if not, then they should vote no. Myself, I'm a little uncomfortable, but perhaps Emily can assuage that concern. Thank you.
Rick, may I, may I speak for just a second?
Yes, of course.
I, I just want to, in response to Mr. Chapman's statement, I would like to point out that in previous years, including last year, there were people that were nominated who were not present at the meeting. And so that has happened before. I think the difference here is those people had been in touch with a member and voiced their interest in being appointed in advance. And they just couldn't make it to the caucus. So that's, that's the big difference, which this is, this is new because this person has not reached out to anybody.
Well, let me just summarize where I think we are. And I think we have some time issues, so we want to move forward if we can. I appreciate Chris's comments. I appreciate that, you know, the fact that we probably should follow what we've done before if we can. Although I find that tonight we seem to be in a bit of a bind. Couple of preliminary thoughts. How many, how many total District One reps is District One entitled to, Hillary?
Forty-eight total.
Were elected. How many were elected?
So you elect sixteen per year usually for a three-year term. This year, between a partial, the partial terms and the full three-year terms, you were short seven. And no matter what, people get appointed for a one-year term only, even if it was an open three-year term.
Okay, so we've got seven spots to fill to get to a full slate. And we are normally supposed to do that from people who are already on this Zoom call. And to my recollection, I don't think there are any people on the Zoom call. So if we want to fill those slots, we have to bend tradition somewhat if we're willing. And have people maybe put forward names that they think people who might be willing, spouse or neighbor, someone they know who lives in District One. And my thought would be that if there's no objection by even one person, in other words, I think one person has the right to have a veto on any name, no explanation. Just if you don't like that person or you don't think is appropriate, then any nominated person tonight would, would not go forward. I would not take that to the person. But if we come up with the seven names or, yeah, then I'd be willing to contact them, ask them if they're willing to serve, give them a little bit of an idea of what's involved and get back to Hillary and perhaps all of us by email or some other fashion in the next few days, maybe another week. If there's general agreement with, I don't know, do we have a vote on that process? Is that process acceptable? How can we vote on the process if people like that approach or not?
So number one, you have two hands up. So I don't know if you want to recognize them before we do this. But what my recommendation would be, we can propose this process after you recognize now the three hands that are up, knowing that we have seven minutes left. And then once those three are heard, you can say, are there objections to this process? So George Carville has his hand up first. Would you like to recognize him?
Yes, yeah.
There. I'd like to second the nomination that Emily put forth. I think if we don't like the process, we can vote that person down. And I'm not in favor of something that gives us a veto over nomination. That just, that just feels bad somehow. Giving one person the veto. It's not democratic.
What was the name of that person? I missed it.
Lee Marth, Marthy?
Okay.
Okay, Emily Kornheiser has her hand up.
Yep, Emily, go ahead.
Just like to say that I am also uncomfortable with sort of nominating people who are not here. However, I personally did not realize that this was sort of our one chance to get nominees in. And so I'm sorry I missed that detail. No, no one's fault. Maybe my fault. Who knows? But, um, so I'm willing to do something unusual given that I think usually we all sort of show up at this. We realize we're down some people. That makes us all hustle a lot in the week in between. And then we sort of show up before town meeting with the people we have hustled to find. And so I'm happy to break with tradition in this sort of one strange circumstance of Zoom awkwardness. I'm happy to speak to Lee if that's, to speak about Lee if that's helpful or if we want to just continue adding names and having Rick reach out to them. I really appreciate that offer, Rick.
We're running out of time, so I think we'll, since we're representatives already, maybe we should just go with the fact that we've had a vote of confidence and not have to have a little speech on a person. So of course, I recognize you. If Pat can activate you and then maybe we can put, I have several names I want to put forward just in the spur of the moment. I came up with a couple.
Thank you. I happen to know Lee Marthy. I would be comfortable with our organism, with our caucus voting her in. And if she didn't want to serve, she wouldn't have to show up at town meeting because she wouldn't have a write-in vote or any other opportunity to vote at representative town meeting. So in this case, I'm fine with that. I'd really, really like to know about, more about any of the other candidates before voting. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay. I have several names I'd like to advance, but I want to make sure that if you have a name that you are contemplating, please raise your hand and we'll make sure you get that in.
Um, Rick Rich has a hand up.
Hey, yep, thank you. I got my cool Star Wars background going on here. But yes, I just wanted to say, I guess I'm not super comfortable voting on people that aren't present. I mean, I, I would, I don't even, I don't even know if they're real people. So I guess it would be hard for me to vote yes for anyone that's not present. But I would be okay with doing what we've done in the past where we meet earlier before Town Meeting Day if people would do that. So I just thought I'd put that out there. Thank you.
I'd like to submit Tim Hamilton. I believe he's a resident. I'd like to submit Kim Therian, a local resident here, businesswoman.
Sorry, it's to you, you said, Rick.
The first name was Tim Hamilton. What do you mean, what didn't?
Where you're going in and out of us being able to hear you.
I'm sorry. My apologies. Tim Hamilton from Hamilton Farms. The next name is Kim Therian. She has a little business, side business, maple syrup boiling. And she's a long-time resident of, lives on Route Nine.
How do you spell her last name? Do you know?
T H E R R I A N. And then Mike Gant is a local pastor. I believe he's in our district. You could maybe check on that.
And how do you spell his last name?
G A N T T.
So just to clarify, Tim Hamilton, is he on Cook Road?
Yes.
Okay, he is District One. Lee Marthy is District One. I'm just checking on the rest. Kim, T H E R R I A N, you said?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
I'm not seeing anybody registered with that last name.
Okay.
And I'm checking into Mike Gant. Oh, actually, hang on a second. The system is terrible and I have to log out in between each one and then log back in. So Kim may actually be in. Let me just check. Nope. Okay. My apologies. I know we are running out of time.
Yeah, what's our time situation?
We have about a minute left, so let me just look into Mike Gant.
We want to recognize Aaron if we can squeeze him in.
So are we talking about the Mike Gant on Western Ave or Highland Street?
Western Ave.
Okay. He is in District One. So Lee, Tim, and Mike are registered in District One.
Can we get Aaron in and see if he has a nominee for us or some other comment?
So Aaron Smith has a hand up.
Yeah, we're waiting on him.
Oh, sorry, Patrick is going back.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So Kim, Kim Therian, her last name is spelled T H E R R I E N.
I E N, okay. Let me look into that.
He used to work with her.
Thank you.
She is in District One.
Can we do a quick vote or maybe, I don't know if this is acceptable? If we don't hear from anybody, then we're all in favor going ahead with this.
Yeah, I think it's because there are seven seats open and there are four nominees. It would be if there's objection to electing or appointing this slate for one-year term, please speak up, otherwise they will be appointed. And then I will need to get their contact information from you, Rick. So that we can get them the materials that they need, and you and I will also need to be in touch about getting you to sign some paperwork tomorrow. But Chris Chapman has a hand up.
Yeah, hi, Chris.
There we go. Okay, I would like to move that we vote to accept that group as a slate. And just, if somebody else could second that, that would be great, and we could vote and.
And a second, in the chair's second, or is that inappropriate?
That's fine. George Carville has a hand up as well.
Second.
Thank you.
Got it.
So I guess we, what do, what do we do now? All, everybody erase?
You just ask if there are any objections, and if not, then the slate is appointed.
That's the deal. Any objections? Going once, twice. Three times. We'll go four times. All right, I think we're almost done here, aren't we, Hillary?
Yes, so Rick, if you'll stay on, that would be great. And everybody else?
Thank you, folks.
We'll see you guys at seven thirty for the info session. Okay, it is six o'clock. Welcome to the District Two Meeting and Caucus. There are a couple of priorities that need to happen in the short amount of time that we have this evening. First is you all need to choose a district chair. And then you need to appoint one person, if there's somebody that's interested to fill a one-year seat for town meeting member. If there's time beyond that, then you all are welcome to discuss any questions or concerns or issues that you have with the articles that are on the warning. I would like to remind everybody that the District Two Meeting and Caucus has a hard stop at six thirty PM. So that the District Three Meeting and Caucus can happen. And then you're all invited to join back at this link at seven thirty PM this evening for the RTM information session. If you are not an elected member to the District Two District, then I ask that you either sign off and come back for the District Three if you're on District Three. And if you're interested in being appointed but not currently a member, you will want to log off the meeting and call in to a toll-free number, which is eight three three five four eight zero two eight two. And you'll be able to present yourself there as to why you wish to be appointed. If there's anybody on the phone, you can mute or unmute yourself using star six. And you can raise your hand or lower your hand using star nine. With all that being said, we'll start by electing a chair for District Two. Currently, the chair is Margaret Atkinson. And that sort of ends this evening as you all choose a new chair for your district. So I will take any nominees for Chair of District Two. And you can raise your hand by using the reactions button at the bottom. If you click on that, there's a raise hand feature. And I see Gary Stroud has a hand up. Okay, before we do that, there is somebody who just came in with Elizabeth's iPad. Patrick, if you can bring that person live so we can just know who they are, that would be helpful. Hi, Elizabeth's iPad. I think we're connecting to audio. I just need to know who you are so that we know if you're a voting member in this district.
On mute, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, so going back to Gary Stroud.
Oh, it's working. Great. Yeah, I like to throw my hat in. Yeah, I'd like to nominate myself for a district chair.
Okay, is there a second for Gary Stroud as district chair? Kurt Dimes has a hand up. Please recognize him.
I second the motion to nominate Gary Stroud.
Great. Are there any other nominations? Please raise your hand if there are. Yes. Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Seeing none, the way that we've done this in the past with only one nominee for one seat for chair is unless there is objection, and you can object by raising your hand, and we'll call on you and hear your objection. Unless there's objection, Gary Stroud will be elected chair to District Two for this year. So if there are any objections, please raise your hand now. Going once, going twice. Seeing none, Gary Stroud, you are now Chair of District Two for this year. So I'll pass it over to you and assist in any way I can. Again, your district has one person to appoint. I'm not seeing anybody on the phone, which is how people would normally join. I am seeing somebody who was just led into the meeting called Ruth's iPad, and it would be good if we understand who that person is. So if it's okay with you, Gary, I'd like to bring them live just to make sure we know who they are.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, Hillary.
Okay, I'm guessing it's Ruth Garbus. I just don't know that for sure. Are you comfortable moving forward, Gary, without, oh, there's Ruth. But that's not Ruth.
That is, who, is that Franz?
Yes.
Ah, hi Franz, welcome.
Okay, Franz, you are good to go. Thank you. Okay, so Gary, I would say if you want to ask if there are any nominations for somebody to appoint, if anybody has spoken to somebody in the district who has voiced interest but can't be here this evening?
Yes, I would, absolutely. Ask anyone to speak who was nominated, wants to speak now. Anyone in the District Two that's been nominated for District Two Representative can raise their hand. Ruth, iPad, or should I say Mr. Franz Reichman? And we're just waiting for Franz.
Okay, now we're in business. I apologize, it took me a couple of minutes to get on. You're looking for people who are volunteering to serve as representatives for representative town meeting? It, now, so Gary, are you the, the caucus chair now? Is that?
Yeah, that's correct, sir.
Okay, so I, fine, then I don't have anybody to nominate. I just didn't know where we were at, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's no problem. We're just looking for someone to nominate. If anyone has any interest or vested interest or passion, who's on fire for this, please, don't be shy, raise your hand. Yeah, Kurt Dimes.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can we dispense with this unnecessary and stultifying mute? That slows down the meeting to no purpose? I mean, I move that we get rid of this extra muting. Unless people are doing their dishes loudly, it serves no purpose.
Well, I think we have this orchestrated in order for a reason so that others can have their turn and in spite of not having a thousand people talking, because this slows up the time on the internet and time on Zoom, so I think this is the proper procedure for now, unless anything changes down the road, we can do that.
So Gary, I'm not seeing anybody with a hand up for, oh, Ricky has a hand up.
Oh, we have Ricky, Ricky Rosati.
Yeah, I'm sorry I'm late. What are we nominating people for? What did I miss?
Oh, we're nominating, what was it for, for Hillary, for the chair?
No, you are chair, Gary.
Representation, I'm sorry. I didn't have my third cup of coffee for RTM.
There's, there's one open seat in District Two for RTM. So you all are nominating and appointing somebody for that one seat for a one-year term as town meeting member for District Two.
Has the different office positions for districts already been settled?
Have the what? I'm sorry?
Have the seats for the different office positions for the District Two already been settled?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
So like for chair, I don't know if there's vice chair for the District Two and like, is this like the first thing that people have been talking about, like appointing? Just the open seats, not office positions?
Oh, I see. We did, the first one we did was nominated chair, which that's me. Now we're nominating somebody for representation for the town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So Gary, oh, we do have a hand. Kurt Dimes has a hand up. Would you like to recognize him, Gary?
We could recognize Mr. Kurt Dimes again.
Point of order, I wasn't asking permission from the owner of the meeting. I was making a motion, and I think it requires a vote. So I'm asking for a vote properly after a motion that we get rid of the mute.
Oh, I see. Got you, Mr. Dimes, thank you.
So Gary, would it be appropriate to ask for a second to that, and then we can?
Yes, is there a second to that, to Kurt's motion? Ricky, Rosati?
I'll second the motion with a friendly amendment to also enable the chat option.
So, if I may?
Yes.
Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that the chat option can be enabled in the middle of a meeting. Is that correct, Patrick? It's not correct. Okay, I stand corrected.
Be enabled, but I wouldn't recommend to the district chair that they enable the chat. It creates what the town attorney calls a separate public meeting, rather than being part of this meeting. And it, it also doesn't become part of the recording. So in effect, it creates a challenge to the open meeting law. You may have noticed that the state had some trouble with this kind of recently, so I, I think it's something that's best avoided.
Okay, we'll take that into consideration, Hillary, noting that as well too. Again, I guess we'll get back to, is anybody still interested in being a representative at the town meeting?
So Gary, I do think it is appropriate to ask if there is objection to Kurt's motion now that it's been seconded.
Right. Is there any objections to Kurt's motion? Please raise your hand.
Otherwise, it will go into effect.
All right, correct. Maya. Hi, Maya. This, you're still muted, okay.
I, I think that having everybody unmuted will make it very difficult for some people who don't have appropriate bandwidth. And maybe already struggling with trying to stay on and get on. So I do object to everybody being unmuted. It's just, it's just, just like everybody having their video on. I think it makes it, it makes it very difficult with the number of people we have on right now. That's all.
Chair recognizes Maya. Chair now recognizes Kipton.
I'm, I'm just agree with what Maya said. Think it's would cause difficulty in a number of ways.
So if I'm not mistaken, that's two motions of objection, correct?
Yeah, so, you know, one option is to ask Patrick to create a poll so that we can take a vote. I do want to remind people that there's sixteen minutes left of this meeting. Actually, wait, sorry. There's fifteen minutes left of this meeting. There's a hard stop at six thirty. So. But you can ask Patrick to create a poll to vote on whether or not to unmute.
Okay, Patrick, would that be fine with you, or if we can just, I guess pretty much muscle through this before the fifteen minutes are up?
He just needs a minute to create the poll and then poll everybody. And just a reminder that the Brattleboro host, myself, BCTV, the interpreters, and David Gartenstein will not be voting on this because we are not voting members in District Two.
So this is our first voting poll for town meeting.
And you have a hand up.
Ah, Chair recognizes Mr. Dimes again. Kurt Dimes. Mr. Dimes, oh, we can hear you now.
It would have been proper to call the question or to ask if other people wanted to speak before calling for the vote.
So there's not a vote yet. Patrick is still creating the poll. So there's another hand up.
Well, we have Chair recognizes Austin Rice, District Two.
Right, of course. I'll let them know, thank you.
I'd like to call the question to keep things moving along.
May I speak, Gary?
Yes, Hillary.
So one thing that has just come up, which Patrick reminded me, is he's dealing with the tech. And he can't be creating a poll and unmuting people at the same time. The conversation sort of has to cease while he's creating the poll.
Okay.
So we just sort of need to wait a moment.
So we'll cease and wait until the polls up and we'll vote then?
Yep. Unless there's more discussion, but the discussion needs to wait until the poll is ready at least. Because Patrick is pulling the poll together at the moment. So, once he gives us the go-ahead, you do have another hand up, but I would just wait until he's ready.
Yeah, this, ask that you hold your questions just for a minute till Patrick gets the poll up already, and we'll get you in there. get you in there.
Okay, can we still recognize people before we launch the poll? So Patrick is ready with the poll, so if you, if you would like to still recognize, it looks like Ricky has a hand up and Robin Morgan has a hand up.
Okay, well, I'd like to get Robin Morgan, is that's okay with Ricky real quick? We haven't heard from her, Robin? Go ahead.
Hi. I just wanted to ask, I believe if we call the question, then we have to vote on whether to cease debate. So if the intention is to move along with the meeting, I think it'd be faster for us to just not say anything and let the vote unfold unless there's a great deal of discussion about this.
Chair recognizes. Never check mark up, oh, check marks down from Mr. Rice, and we're just waiting on that poll. We'll take a quick, quick from Ricky, would that be fine, Hillary?
That's, that's, you're the chair.
Well, we take here Ricky Rosati, the Chair recognizes her.
I think that when we were meeting in person, we all could see and really hear and speak with each other and to just limit us from being seen and heard as representatives is ridiculous and I feel really frustrated by that, with those limitations and like, why isn't someone else moderating? The who, who is allowed to speak, when, why is Patrick expected to do all of that? Why can't there be like a vice chair doing that rather than telling people if you really want to use time efficiently, we shouldn't be just waiting for one person to do a poll, we should have multiple responsibilities and duties to multiple people.
That's you, Ricky, second. Hillary.
So just to speak to that, with the technological limits, there's only one person who's the host at a time. And I don't believe you can have somebody muting and unmuting while somebody else is creating a poll at the same time.
Similar to like when we have our town meeting coming up, you know, we have to have that time in there. If Kurt and also, I don't know where Patrick's at right now, so I don't know.
Patrick is ready for the poll whenever you are.
All right.
You have 10 minutes left of, of this meeting, you have four hands up, so however you want to do this, Gary.
I think we should do the poll right now since we're only down to four minutes, people. And you should have our answer in a few minutes, seconds.
Patrick, does it appear that most people have voted? Okay, so Gary, I don't know if you want to give people another 10, 15 seconds?
Yeah, we can recognize Ricky again, Ricky?
Well, we need, I think we need to finish the poll first.
Okay. Let's do that, let's do the poll.
Are you ready to launch the results?
I'm all ready, let's see what the final jeopardy answers are. Hey, 81% says nay. And the i's are 19%. So, the nays have it. Moving on to the next information from Hillary to see where we're going next.
So, it seems like we still don't have anybody to nominate, which is fine, this district will be one member short of full. Which has happened before. So Gary, it's your meeting, you have nine minutes left, there's nothing else that needs to happen unless there's discussion that people want to happen for the next eight minutes.
Okay, does anyone else have any discussions or interests? Let's see, anybody else that hasn't had their hand up yet? Or spoken yet, should I say? Because then I'm going to go to Ricky and then Austin. Okay, so we'll go to Ricky Rosati.
Well, I'm just really disappointed that people are not considering the reality from the consequences of their vote of no, that, that is preventing us from being able to have points of order in a timely, timed-up way. Because I had a point of order when I raised my hand that the poll did not include my amendment to also enable the chat feature. But no, you decided to because I was muted, you couldn't hear that I had a point of order and so like that is interrupting really the process of democracy by having this so much over control over the entire meeting and people speaking. It's that, that's just really unethical.
When I would take, thank you Ricky. Next up is Austin Rice.
Um, I know that you can make somebody a co-host on these Zoom meetings and they can have the ability to mute and unmute, so even though Patrick has to run the the polls and that side of the, could we not have BCTV or another objective third party do the muting, unmuting for us to keep things running a little faster and less on Patrick's plate?
Oh.
You're muted, Hillary.
Muted, Hillary.
He said if we do this again next year, that's a great suggestion.
Great.
Hopefully be in person. And Mary McLaughlin. Chair recognizes you.
To step forward to serve as a representative and the, the fact that we get bogged down in moving away from what this meeting was intended to do, and that is to make sure we have a full slate of representation.
Okay, we might have missed part of that, could you reiterate that, Mary? Because your mic was off when you were discussing.
I'm sorry. I think there may be a direct correlation between the fact that people are not stepping forward to serve for the District Two Committee and the fact that we got off the topic of our purpose, which is to have a full slate of representatives going into town meeting. I know I will attend the Zoom information, the meeting that helps us to make sure we have all of the tech down. But I think that it's important for us to acknowledge there are limitations with it and there are also things that are really positive about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else want to chime in? Yeah, how many minutes left, Hillary, I guess? Five minutes? Anyone else care to? Roof's iPad, I believe that's Franz Reich, the Chair recognizes Franz.
Hi, you know, I, I think the point that Ricky brought up is quite important and legitimate. In, in Robert's Rules of Order, one is allowed to interrupt what's happening to object to the way things are going, you know, if the rules are not being followed. Which is, you know, kind of what a point of order is, it's like, hey, this isn't right, we're not, we're not doing things the way we're supposed to. And that you know, that, that you have the right to interrupt and say, point of order, and be recognized to make your point. And that's very difficult in this setting because all you can do is raise your hand and go to the back of the queue and there's no way to indicate that under Robert's Rules, what you're saying has priority over what other people are trying to say. I don't know how to address that. But I think it's a legitimate point that if, you know, smart tech people can put their heads together. I, I don't know if there's anything can do about it, but I think it's a legitimate point. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Franz, the Chair recognizes David Gartenstein.
We are hoping for town meeting to have the chat function enabled with chat only going to the IT person, in this case, Patrick Morland, to allow privileged motions that be points of order and points of information. So we are making an effort to have that alternative available for town meeting. The mechanism that was used in the past to try to get privileged motions to the floor was clearing out the queue and then allowing people to raise points of order and points of information that way. We are hoping to enable chat function just to Patrick Morland this coming year to be able to raise points of information or points of order. Not for this caucus meeting, but for town meeting.
Thank you, David. Chair recognizes Daniel Quip.
Hello. I was curious whether the reactions button that indicates no, like thus could be used as like a proxy for a point of order, but yeah, this was before hearing David's explanation of how the chat might be used on the day, so I don't know, just consider.
Thank you, Danny. Chair recognizes Hillary.
So Daniel, I just wanted to point out that that is something that we discussed. Whether it's using the no or using the coffee cup or some other reaction. And the problem is that doesn't rise you to the top of the queue. And when we have a stack that's all the way down, because RTM is you know, a lot of people, it would mean that Patrick, while trying to navigate unmuting and muting people and deal with the polls, is also having to scroll up and down to find people with a no. So that's why that, it was discussed and decided not to go down.
That makes sense, I realized when I did the no that it put my hand down and took me off the queue, so.
Now you have a coffee cup.
And Gary, you have two hands up, I would like to make sure you know you have one minute.
Okay, so we have one minute, we're going to split that up, okay, Robin Morgan, Chair recognizes you.
Yes, I was just going to say, I think that is a really important reason why it would be great to assign co-hosts for the town meeting. One, even though we don't have it for this, so that some of those things could be supported by more than one person, that's all.
Thank you, Robin. Chair now recognizes Mr. Kurt Dimes.
I hope everybody realizes that if we weren't muted, this would not be a problem. You just say, point of order, and everybody knows it right away.
Chair recognizes that, Mr. Dimes, thank you, sir. Kind of hard when you're dealing with technology versus in-person, it's a big difference. You know, a lot of legalities that fall to play, things that you say in the chat has to be also added to that list, and we have to have somebody who's going to put that in, and I don't know if you've seen that happening up in Burlington and up at Montpelier. We have a few seconds left, I'm going to take Eli. Make a quick comment.
Yes, just to say that the technical limitation of everyone unmuting is that we can have a lot of echoes going around and a quick cacophony of someone's speaker is closest to someone else's mic. Everyone echoes and all of a sudden you have a noise buildup that is no one in particular's fault. But I have seen this happen a lot in bigger Zooms. That one person's slight technical error or maybe just an equipment failure on any given person's machine can make the entire thing completely chaos and inaudible.
I've seen that happen before.
So, Hillary. It's 6:31, Gary. So when you're ready to close the meeting, I would just ask everybody to please leave and then, so that the District Three caucus can happen. And then join us again at 7:30 PM for the information session. And Gary, I would also ask for you to stay on for a moment after folks sign out.
Absolutely, okay, I'm closing out the meeting now so we can move on to the next one, so we all can be together at the 7:30 meeting. Thank you all again, any questions, please, send it to me.
Okay, it is 6:46, I'm going to open the district meeting and caucus for District Three. And, welcome, there are a couple of priorities that we need to cover this evening. Number one is electing a District Three Chair. And the second is there are two open seats for District Three Town Meeting Member. And the goal is to appoint two people to fill those seats for a one-year term. I would like to remind folks that there is a hard stop for this meeting at 7:15. So that we can get ready for the 7:30 RTM information session. You, because this is the last caucus, you're welcome to stay on, you don't need to sign out. But we're going to stop at 7:15. If you are not an elected member to District Three, please sign out and join us at at 7:30. If you're interested in being appointed, leave and call back if you're not already calling in on the phone, I see that we do have two callers. If there's anybody else, a good phone number to call is 833-548-0282. For folks who are on the phone, in order to mute and unmute yourself, you'll press star six. And in order to raise your hand and lower your hand, you'll press star nine. So that being said, before we elect district chair, I do see that Peter Thalian has a hand up, did you have a question, Peter? Patrick, did you try to?
Start your video, okay.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Now, can we just edit the name? Can we edit my last name, please? Oh. Sorry.
That's okay, I, do you feel that that's, we know who you are, so it's not necessary on our end? If you feel it's necessary, I can ask Patrick to open the ability to edit your name.
Yeah, if he has the ability and it wouldn't take too many seconds, I would appreciate that.
Patrick, can you give Peter the ability to edit his name for a moment, please?
Okay. Now go away.
Thanks. Okay, so while Peter is editing his name, I would, so currently Bob Ozer is the District Three Chair. But I'm running this meeting until we have a new chair elected because his term ended today. So are there any nominations for District Three Chair? If there are, please raise your hand at the bottom of your screen, you'll see something that says reactions, if you click on that, you'll see raise hand. David Levinbach.
Sorry, I would nominate Robert Ozer to be caucus chair.
Okay, is there a second to Robert Ozer being District Three Chair? Mary White.
So I second that nomination, sorry.
Are there any other nominations for district chair? Going once? Going twice? Okay, so the way that we've been doing this last year and in the other two district caucuses is unless there's objection, and in order to show objection, please raise your hand. Bob Ozer will be the District Three Chair for a term of one year until the next representative town meeting district caucuses. So is there any objection to Bob Ozer being your chair?
Brattleboro senior meals is trying to come in.
Okay. Seeing none. Patrick, when you get back to your computer, if you can bring Bob Ozer live, he is the District Three Chair. Hi Bob. So, just to recap, you have two people that you are looking to appoint to fill these seats, there are two callers. So. I'll leave it to you to go from there.
Actually, I think to be
I think to be precise, one of those callers is me. And I think I'm getting an echo. So maybe I should have an objection that I should be chair.
So Bob, there are actually three callers. One of them is you. There are two other callers on the line. Would you, you're muted. There we go.
So I'm unmuted, but is the echo really disturbing?
I can't hear it.
You can't hear an echo? Okay, well, good. Then I'll try not to disturb myself with the echo. Without further ado, there was one, one note that Catherine Turnus might be a little late. I don't know if she's trying to join. No.
I don't see her.
Okay, she said she had another meeting that was.
I think this is her Brattleboro Senior Meals. Is that Catherine Turnus?
That's correct. Yeah, she was at Brattleboro Senior Meals.
Okay, yep. She's here then. So Bob, do you want me to read the last four digits of the phone number and then you can recognize them?
Sure, we could try to do that.
Okay, so the first one I'm seeing.
So I can see them here.
Okay.
So I have numbers eight, four, seven, seven first in my list. So would phone number ending in eight, four, seven. Identify themselves.
Hello, everybody. Can folks hear me?
We can.
Great. Hi, everybody. This is Sheila Linton. See her pronouns. How's everybody doing tonight?
Very good.
Is this my opportunity to speak?
This is, this is your opportunity to speak as to why you would want to be a town meeting member.
Great, thank you, Bob. I appreciate that. So for those.
And are you in the district?
Right, great. I will, I will cover all of that. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Sheila Linton, and I use she/her pronouns and identify as a Black Indigenous queer person. I'm born and raised in Brattleboro and have lived my whole life here, raised my children here, and I'm also a grandparent of a grandkid that will be entering into kindergarten in September at one of the local public schools. I was in District Two growing up and became a registered voter where I have been very engaged in local and state politics since I was a teenager. I became a RTM member in 2004 when there were no to few people of color, and I was one of the youngest representatives in the town meeting for years. I sat on numerous local boards and state commissions and been a part of many committees throughout the years, including being the Chair of the Policy Council for Early Education Services, Brattleboro Town School Board Member for five years from 2004 to 2009, being on the CPCC Equity Committee, Safety Committee, and many more. After being a school board member, I have served as a town meeting representative in District Two for many years and had a current seat as a District Two Town Meeting Representative until I finally was able to buy a home in the place that I call home, which is Brattleboro. I forgot to change my address. So when I went to go vote, I realized that meant I also had to resign from my current position as a District Two Town Meeting Representative and which placed me in District Three, and I was too late to get on the ballot. So my new home is in District Three. This is a big difference for me as I've lived most of my life in District Two that I absolutely love. And I'm a bit familiar with District One. But though I enjoy representing District Two, I'm excited and look at this as an opportunity for me to have a chance to continue the work I've done as a town meeting representative while getting to know my District Three peeps specifically. So with that being said, I am not only qualified, but dedicated to this work and serving the community in whatever ways I'm able. And I hope to continue to be a strong voice for the people who have asked me to step into this position. And I'm here today to ask for your support and your appointment of me to one of the open seats in District Three. So thank you, everybody. And if you would like to reach me, I can be reached at 508-737-8477. And thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And another phone number in the list. And it ends with five, six, two, seven. Could five, six, two, seven identify themselves?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, we can.
Excellent. So I'm Sam Stevens from District Three, obviously. I am a recent political science graduate from UVM and like the best way to get my hand in is to begin in my lifelong hometown of Brattleboro, Vermont. I'd love to be a part of the process and start to learn how things work.
Okay, and you're, and you're in District Three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And are there any other callers who are potential candidates? Can you see anyone, Hillary, or?
I'm not seeing anybody else on the phone. I would just ask if any other district members have any nominations for somebody that couldn't be here.
Going once. Going twice. Three times. So there are two seats and two candidates. I, I think we could possibly say if there are no objections, then we could appoint in this caucus Sheila Linton and Sam Stevens as town meeting members for one year, starting immediately, right? Do we hear any objections? And I guess we could, we could do as before. If there are any objections, please raise your hand. I see a hand. Christopher Kane.
Hi, could I just get like a little more info on Sam? Just could I, could I, I hope he's still on the line.
He should still be online. And Patrick may need to unmute him. That would be five, six, two, seven.
Bob, Bob, may I speak for a second? So Chris, I would just be curious if you have particular questions for him, just so that he can answer what it is that you're looking for.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Like what, what is, what are your main priorities for the town, I think, would be a decent, open-ended question?
Or, or perhaps even more open-ended, tell us a little more about why you would want to be a town meeting member.
So if I remember correctly, Sam Stevens' last four digits are five, six, two, seven.
Correct.
All right. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So my chief concern, I would say, is making Brattleboro a more financially livable place to be. That is my main interest at this point, but otherwise I am very open to ideas. I wouldn't say I subscribe predominantly to any one political ideology. I'm open-minded and interested in learning about the process, just what good I can for my community. Hopefully that goes some ways toward answering your question.
Okay, thank you. So again, if there are no objections, we have two vacant seats and two candidates who could be appointed for one year. If there are any objections, please raise your hand. Going once, going twice, going three times. And seeing no objections, the candidates are selected by caucus for one-year term. Do we need some contact information or would Hillary get that from other means?
I believe that I have contact information for both of them because they both ran previously, so I should be all set with that. Bob, I'll just need you to come in tomorrow morning if possible, sometime between nine and noon to sign the paperwork.
Sure. So any other business?
None for me. I don't know if there's any from anybody in the district.
Looking for hand? So I guess we would entertain a motion to adjourn. Jesse Kane. Kane. Right? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Hey, Bob, thanks. I would motion to adjourn.
Okay. And second to that. And Nelson Cooley. I assume that's a second. And you're muted.
Seconding the motion to adjourn.
Okay. And unless there's an objection, Christopher has his hand up. Christopher Kane.
Chris, you're muted.
I was doing the second.
Okay, okay. And objection? Please stand adjourned. And the information meeting begins at 7:30, correct?
Correct.
But you could stay on this connection if you wish.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth McLaughlin. I'm the Chairwoman of the Brattleboro Select Board. This evening's informational meeting is for the benefit of representative town meeting members, but presented by the Brattleboro Select Board. Yoshi has a meeting been properly warned?
It has.
Great. Okay, so tonight we'll follow this lovely fuchsia or neon pink guidebook. Ooh, I can't, there we are. Thank you, Daniel. And this will be our guide. It's called the 2021-2022 Annual Report. And it's a series of informational items that we're presenting to the Assembly this evening. Especially and including the warned items. So after each article, there'll be an opportunity for the, for the RTM members to ask questions. And any discussion, it's really for informational questions because any discussion will be, take place at representative town meeting. So please limit any informational request to two minutes. The entire select board and the town staff are present to respond to any inquiries. And all questions will be directed to the Chair. First, let me introduce our new town manager, Yoshi Manali. You want to say hi, Yoshi?
Yes, I'm excited to learn all about town meeting. This is my first one, so this is, I think it's interesting to see it on Zoom, and I'm looking forward to hopefully next year to see it in person, which I've heard is a very different experience. So thank you.
Thank you, Yoshi. And also our Assistant Town Manager, Patrick Morland. We'll be hearing several things from him this evening, and I thank him for participation. And now let's see, ask, well, the four out of five select board members who are here to just say hello. Ian, you want to begin?
Good evening, RTM. You don't know me. My name is Ian Goodnow, and I am the Vice Chair of the Brattleboro Select Board.
Daniel?
Hi, I'm Daniel Quip and the clerk of the Brattleboro Select Board.
Jessica?
Hi, I'm Jess Gelter, and I am recently re-elected member, newest member of the Brattleboro Select Board.
And Tim Wessel is delayed, but I'm sure he'll be here shortly.
In a minute.
Yes. Okay, a couple of announcements before we begin. First, any items that representative town meeting members wish to present at the end of town meeting under other business should be written and emailed to the town manager's administrative assistant, Jessica Sticklor, and her email is jsticklor, that's J-S-T-I-C-K-L-O-R at brattleboro.org. Also, RTM Technical Practice on Zoom will take place this Saturday from 8:30 AM to 10:30 AM, and you use the very same Zoom address that you did to get on Zoom this evening. And also on Monday, March 14th, there's Robert's Rules of Order, a primer for representative town meeting to be presented by Representative Town Meeting Member Andy Davis. And this is 6:30 to 7:30 PM on Monday night, and there's a different Zoom address for that. There's a flyer on the website at the library, various places, we can find that address. And of course, representative town meeting is Saturday, March 19th at 8:30 AM. And that is on the same Zoom account. And let us proceed to page 12 of the annual report. On page 12. Well, first of all, just let me call your attention to the table of contents, just to see, there's so many interesting features here, including the Select Board Chairs Report on page 28. But anyway, let's go to page 12. And here we have all the articles. And the first item is Article One, To Act on the Town Auditor's Report. Are there any questions regarding that? I see we have a question from Christopher Kane. Patrick, can we? Do you have a question about Article One, Christopher? I can't hear you.
You got unmute.
I have no questions with Article One. I have an issue with the second page of our annual report being of not Pedro Elwell, but a police officer. This police officer has harassed many of my friends throughout high school. And I, I, when I see this, I am not okay with that. I will be done with that for now. You can continue.
Page two of this report?
He's referring to the insert, but it's not appropriate for this meeting.
All right. Tim, while you're here, introduce yourself, please.
Hi, this is Tim Wessel. Sorry I was late, everyone. I have a toddler to blame that on.
Thank you, Tim. All right, Article Two, To See If the Town Will Authorize Its Select Board To Employ a Certified Public Accountant or Public Accountants. It's a standard item. Do you have any questions? Does Zach McLaughlin wish to speak to that item? Does Zach McLaughlin wish to speak to that item?
I was, my question was in relation to Article One. My assumption is, so that is, Article One is to accept the auditor's report by RTM?
Yes, and the auditor's report is in the booklet.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay. Article Three, To See if the Town Will Ratify, Approve, and Confirm The Select Board's Appointment of a Town Clerk for a Term of One Year. And we have an excellent town clerk, and that's item three. Are there any questions regarding that? Seeing none. Article Four, To See if the Town Will Ratify, Approve, and Confirm The Select Board's Appointment of an Interim Town Treasurer for a Term of Up to One Year. Are there any questions regarding that item? Ricky Rosati, do you have a question?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, so when you are reading, or whoever is reading the articles, are we to expect that to be neutral or for there to be kind of like a biased preference for how each one is, what their opinion is on each one? Because like, just for example, you said, oh, we have an excellent town clerk. Are we going to have to hear your opinion about every single article presented?
No, you're not. I couldn't help myself but say that we have an excellent town clerk. All right. Let's see. To See if the Town Will Ratify, Approve, and Confirm The Select Board's Appointment of a Town Attorney for a Term of One Year. Any questions regarding that item? The next item, Article Six, To Elect Two Representatives to the Capital Grant Review Board for a Term of One Year, Members to be Nominated from the Floor. So again, that's an item that will be taken up at representative town meeting. Ricky, do you have a comment regarding that?
Yeah, I'm confused about this formatting, about how there had been previous complaints about how at our informational meetings and at RTM, when we were meeting in person, that there was this position of power by how the select board were put on a platform above everyone else, and that was giving them more opportunity to speak, whereas these are our meetings. So why are the video cameras on for all of the select board meeting members? And not the representatives?
Ricky, that's because this informational meeting is run by the select board. We are presenting information to the representative town meeting, and on Saturday, a representative town meeting, all the members will be discussing each article.
From my understanding, this is not run by you. Yes, you are presenting the information, but this is co-run at the most, and this really is, are supposed to be our meeting, ran by us, not the select board.
That is not my-
You can present the information without having all of the select board members' videos be on? I just think that there should be some equality of how people are represented.
Thank you for your comment. Tim, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to respond to Ricky a little bit. I think there might be a little bit of confusion between questions about how RTM is run and questions as to how RTM informational, this informational meeting is run. This meeting is intended to be all five of us and our town manager up on the screen so that we can be literally interrogated if you wish, or ask whatever questions you have of us as to why all these, you know, the merits of these articles. So it really doesn't make a lot of sense to just force people who most likely are just trying to get all the information, and when they have a question, they would be able to raise their hand. But it's quite different from RTM, and this is our meeting in order to be able to inform RTM of our perspective on the budget. And RTM is representative town meeting's meeting, which is why it's run by a moderator.
Oh, let me take this opportunity to introduce David Gardenstein, our new moderator, to the assembly. David, would you like to say hello?
Evening. Nice to see everybody.
Thank you. All right, let's see, where are we? Article Seven. To see if the-
There was a hand for the previous one.
Pardon me?
I think there was a hand for the previous article.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Rich Waze.
Rich Waze, do you have a comment? Or a question?
Yeah, hi, it's not about the article. It's just more about timing. I have three small children and I have a job tomorrow, and I'm just hoping that we can stay on topic. There's 83 people here. I'm sure they all have lots of things to do, and it's just a plea, Ricky, to please maybe limit the questions to the topics on hand. I'd really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right. Article Eight, To See if the Town Will Elect or Appoint Members to the Human Service Review Committee for a Term of One Year, Members to be Nominated from the Floor. Again, that's an action to be taken at representative town meeting. Article Nine, To Elect Three Trustees for the Brooks Memorial Library to Serve Three Years and One Trustee to Fill a Two-Year Unexpired Term. The names for consideration for the term of 2022-2025 are Howard Burrows, Anne Varelli, and Joyce Sullivan. The person for the two-year term, 2022 to 2024, is Circa Kaufman. All right, Article Ten, To See if the Town Will Seek Its Will Seek to Authorize Its Select Board to Borrow Money in Anticipation of Taxes, Grants, and Other Revenue. Any questions? Very good. Okay, Article Eleven, To See if the Town Will Act Upon the Representative Town Meeting Steering Committee Report. I direct the assembly to the representative report, which is on page 83 of this document. And in a similar vein, Article Twelve is to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $2,500 for the purpose of providing lunch to representative town meeting at the 2023 representative town meeting, as recommended by the steering committee. And Article Thirteen, I'll read all these, and then comments can be at the end. To See if the Town Will Elect or Appoint Members to the RTM Steering Committee for a Term of One Year, for the duration of the committee, Members to be Nominated from the Floor. All right, are there questions regarding those three items that are RTM Steering Committee issues? Ricky, do you have a question?
My questions are pertinent to ask at the beginning of the meeting about the decorum that we're having, and so my pertinent question is that why was there no dial-in information published for people to call into the meeting if they don't have internet, both the public and representatives?
The notice that was mailed to me, and I assume it was mailed to all town meeting representatives, has dial-in information.
I wasn't mailed any notice as a representative, and it was not published. The dial-in information was not published on the municipal calendar or on the election webpage.
I'm sorry to hear that, Ricky. Patrick, do you have any comment to make about the notice that was given?
Good evening, everybody. I don't really have any comment. I know in looking at the annual report, the information does in fact include call-in numbers. I hope that's-
Yes, page two. Thank you very much, Patrick.
Sure.
All right, let's move on. Did I see someone else's hand up? It's been taken down. All right. Ricky, do you have another comment about these articles?
Yeah, I was looking for confirmation that the dial-in information is going to be posted both on the calendar and on the elections page.
Patrick, can you respond, please?
I suppose what I can say is, Ricky, maybe in the morning you can shoot me an email with some suggestions, and I'd be happy to-
Those are my suggestions that I've been asking for several days and haven't been responded to about them yet.
Okay, well, I may need to see those again.
Daniel, you have a handle?
Yeah, I just wanted to double-check that all of the warning information is on the RTM page on the website. There was feedback given that the RTM page was hard to find, so that is a lot easier to find now. And so if you go to the town website, you click Representative Town Meeting. On the right-hand side, there's a kind of list of events, one of which is tonight's meeting, and the other one is town meeting on March 19th. And then there's a link for the RTM warning, and in that link is all of the information that people would have used to access tonight's meeting, and will need to use to access RTM. I guess, you know, from an accessibility point of view, like, we know that the legal term for these things is "warned", but like, you know, it's maybe not super obvious that you need to click the "warn" in to find out how to attend this meeting. So maybe the dial-in number and the, you know, general information about when this meeting is taking place could be made more prominent.
Thank you, Daniel.
You're welcome.
Gary Stroud, do you have a comment?
The camera is now officially on. Well, that being said, a lot of that information is properly out there, and if you, I tell other representatives, if you haven't gotten it, seen it, reach out to your other representatives. This is a good way of connecting, networking, getting to know each other, and you could always come up to the municipal building and request one if need be, if you're not properly, if you don't feel you have got any information readily available to you. So just a little FYI.
Thank you very much. George Carville, do you have a comment or question?
There, am I unmuted?
You're fine. I can hear you.
Thank. Can we get back to the agenda, please, and get the information we need for the town meeting? Thank you.
Thank you. Zach McLaughlin, do you have a comment?
So my question is around, and I'm reading, I had my hand up before and I pulled it back down. So I was just reading about the RTM Steering Committee, and so that's not something that exists in the charter that was created at the end of town meeting, representative town meeting last year. Is that a rolling standing committee of representative town meeting? Or is that a one-off ad hoc committee that was for this particular year? And did the vote last time around establish this as a rolling thing into perpetuity?
Well, if you'll, I think it was a one-time meeting for this past calendar year. And if you'll read the report, you'll see what the committee has voted as to its ongoing status. And it's up for the RTM members to vote on that report and the results of that report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Morton, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. I'm on the Steering Committee, and it was actually last year voted for a three-year committee. And so that has to be either modified this time around to terminate it or to continue with that plan, but it was a three-year appointment. And that would be, that would be the real answer. It was a one-time event and other business, but it was for three years. That's all.
Thank you very much. Ann Thompson?
Hi, definitely not trying to make this meeting longer, but just had this question and wasn't sure where to ask it about the items that said the committees are going to be nominated and voted on from the floor. I know last year was a little bit challenging as a member, and I talked to a few people about this because we only had, you know, we heard the person's name, and then we had like moments to vote, and we didn't necessarily know who they were. So I'm wondering, kind of, why is it done this way? Does it have to be done this way? And is there some kind of format for not doing it that way in the future, if that was what other people wanted as well?
Um, let's ask either Patrick Morland or David Gardenstein if they care to comment on that inquiry.
I would just note, this is David Gardenstein. I would just note that if people are interested in being nominated and want to make their names available before town meeting and circulate information to other town meeting members, that's certainly one available way to proceed that would increase information sharing.
Great idea, David. Thank you. All right. Let's continue. Article 14, See What Compensation the Town Will Pay to Select Board Members. Patrick, would you like to discuss that for a moment, please?
Sure. Good evening. What's good? The present salary for the select board members is $8,000 for each regular member and $10,000 for the chair.
Great, and so the discussion of that will take place at representative town meeting. And let me ask Patrick to discuss Article, oh, are there any questions about Article 14? Ricky, do you have a question, or is your hand up from before? Hand is down. Okay, very good. Article 15 is something that Patrick will present to us. Mr. Morland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in Article 15, the Select Board is proposing to use $300,000 of the town's unassigned general fund balance as determined on June 30th of 2021 for the fiscal '23 capital request specifically to be used for paving, road paving. Each year, the Select Board seeks to adhere to the town guideline of retaining a sum equal to 10% of the general fund budget in the unassigned general fund balance and uses any sum above that percentage in the construction of the budget for the following year. In this particular year, had the Select Board strictly adhered to the 10% guideline, there would only have been approximately $50,000 available for use in the fiscal '23 general fund budget, which may seem strange, particularly given how well we performed in fiscal '21. We ended that particular year with a surplus of almost $375,000 and did not even consume the $223,000 use of fund balance, which was planned in that year. So how can this be? The answer is that the performance of the general fund is not the only factor involved in establishing what the unassigned general fund balance will be. The unassigned general fund balance is determined by our auditors, and in addition to the fund performance, prepaid expenses also have an impact on the unassigned general fund balance. Prepaid expenses are legitimate obligations of the town that accrue, for example, to fiscal '22, but were paid in fiscal '21. During this particular transition from fiscal '21 to fiscal '22, the town prepaid $889,884 of fiscal '22 expenses in fiscal '21. This compares to $426,628 in the previous year. So we more than doubled the amount of prepaid expenses, adding to what had been done the previous year by almost half a million dollars. Why this significant increase in prepaid expenses? The only answer is that during this particular time, when we do not benefit from having a finance director, staff in the finance department receive bills which they knew to be town obligations and paid them promptly, perhaps not fully anticipating the impact that this would have on the unassigned general fund balance and the discussion that we have for the fiscal '23 budget. This greatly reduced the unassigned fund- This greatly reduced the unassigned fund balance available to us for use in fiscal '23. The upside is that the funds were also raised in fiscal '22 for those same expenses. So at the conclusion of this year, those funds will be available to us once again. So the board chose $300,000 to incorporate into the fiscal '23 budget. This leaves set aside not 10%, but about 8.7% of the fiscal '23 budget, which is just, as I pointed out, temporarily unavailable to us. This was the right amount. It was enough to bring the increase in the tax levy down to a reasonable rate, 2.1% over the previous year, but not so much as to keep us from being able to to keep us being able to achieve our secondary goal of annually increasing our real-time to capital. We are doing that in fiscal '23 more so than in fiscal '22. I appreciate your patience with this answer, and I'll turn it back over to the Chair.
Thank you. Zach McLaughlin, you have a comment, question?
Quick question, and it's just, so Patrick, the, when we budget, we build around the concept of having a 10% buffer that's going to come through in our unassigned general fund balance on an annual basis?
Yeah, so...
Go ahead, Patrick.
I'm sorry, Liz. So each year, our auditors determine the amount of unassigned general fund balance. Our guideline, our operating principle that the town has used for quite a while now, has been to make sure and keep in reserve an amount equal to 10% of the budget. Okay, in this particular year, we're only keeping 8.7%. The money is still there. It's not like it's not there. It's just because of a somewhat arcane accounting rule, it's assigned and not unassigned.
Thank you, Patrick. Maya, do you have a question? Hi, Maya.
Hi, I just wanted to know whether we anticipate that next year we'll be able to go back to the 10% reserve? And I see Ian is shaking his head yes.
I think the entire select board is shaking their head.
So, we don't, this is, this is just a one-off. It's not, doesn't mean that we're going to be sliding back and not keeping our 10% reserve. Thank you.
That's correct. Thank you, Maya. Thank you for that question. Ricky Rosati?
I went on to the page that Daniel had directed me to, and I found that. And there are no instructions for when the public or a representative does call in for them to indicate a way for them to raise their hand so they can ask a question or be heard on issues. And so are the directions going to be included for how to proceed with that in both that page and on the elections page and the municipal calendar?
Well, Ricky, we will take that under advisement. And Mr. Gardenstein and Mr. Morland will discuss it and put any updates on the calendar. Thank you for your question. All right, where are we? We're on Article 16. To see if the town will appropriate the sum of $37,551 for community marketing initiative for the promotion of Brattleboro performed jointly by the Brattleboro Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Brattleboro Alliance. And for the past four years, the town has appropriated 10% of the 1% meals and rooms tax collected by the town to fund a marketing campaign. And there's additional information about this marketing campaign on page 72 of this annual report and following. There are questions regarding this from Ricky? Ricky, do you have a question regarding Article 16? No, okay. Article 17. To see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $80,000 through special assessments on properties within the downtown improvement district to be used for capital and operating costs of the town's duly designated downtown organization as reflected in its work plan and budget. And information about the Downtown Brattleboro Alliance is presented on page 14 of this document, and it's also at length from the Downtown Brattleboro Alliance on page 75 of this document. Are there any comments regarding this article? Article 17. All right, not hearing any. Let us move to Article 18, which is a mouthful.
Liz?
Yes?
Do you want me to read it? Do you want a break?
That'd be lovely, thank you.
Yeah, it'd be my pleasure. To see if the town will raise and appropriate, oh, the plow goes by, right, as I'm starting. To see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $275,575 to support human service programs and facilities for the residents of Brattleboro to be allocated among service providers in the following manner. AIDS Project of Vermont, of Southern Vermont, $2,000. Big Brother, Big Sisters, $7,500. Boys and Girls Club, $24,275. Brattleboro Area Hospice, $6,000. Brattleboro Center for Children, $4,500. Building a Positive Community, $8,750. Community Asylum Seekers Project Incorporated, $3,750. Family Garden, $2,500. Food Connects, $5,000. Gathering Place, $5,000. Green Mountain RSVP, $9,900. Groundworks Collaborative, $20,000. Healthcare Rehabilitation Services, $10,000. Meeting Waters YMCA, $10,000. Out in the Open, $16,500. Putney Food Shelf, $1,000. Out in the Open, $16,500. Oh, I just read that one. Retreat Farm, $2,500. Senior Solutions, $4,000. SEFC, $14,000. The Root Social Justice Center, $20,000. Theater Adventures Incorporated, $1,900. Turning Point, $15,000. Vermont Adult Learning, $1,500. Vermont Association for the Blind, $700. Vermont Center for Independent Living, $1,600. Vermont Family Network, $2,500. Visiting Nurses and Hospice of Vermont in New Hampshire, $12,200. Wyndham County Dental Center, $7,500. Wyndham County Humane Society, $2,000. Wyndham County Safe Place Child Advocacy Center, $3,500. Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust, $10,000. Winston Proudie Center for Child and Family, $10,000. Women's Freedom Center, $17,500. And Youth Services, $21,500.
Thank you very much, Ian. And I would also tell the Assembly that there's a discussion of the scoring and the voting for this on page 15. And there's additional information about the Human Service Committee and this process on page 55 of this report. Are there any questions regarding this? Franz Reichman?
Good evening. So with regard to this article, I've got a question, and it extends into some other related matters as well. And the question is, can the town meeting representatives change the amounts within this article? Say, you know, where we think some particular social service deserves more or less funding than is specified in the article? And then someone could vote to amend the article by changing the amount that's specified for that agency? Is that a permissible action by Representative Town Meeting?
Thank you for your question. I think David Gardenstein has the answer. David? I can't hear you.
Yeah, thank you, Liz. The individual items within the Human Services article cannot be changed. When we developed this process at town meeting a number of years ago, we delegated that responsibility to the Human Services Committee. And so there's an article that will allow changing the total amount, but not individual line items, and that's by action of a prior town meeting. The town attorney will be available also to speak to that issue more specifically at town meeting. I've already raised that with him to make sure that we've got some further detail for town meeting on the 19th.
Thank you, David. Sonia, do you have a question?
Hi, sorry, that took a while. Um, I just have a question that I don't know if you'll be able to answer, or someone on the committee. I'm a little confused by the numbers in the report that they said that that the request for funding is at this 364,000 level, 100,000 level, which is higher than the percentage that we've set at RTM last year. But then in the graph with all the numbers, the chart, it's the grand, the fiscal year '23 grand total is only 275, and the recommendations is that 364 number. And I'm just kind of confused by what those all mean, and I'm wondering if somebody can clarify. Like, is the grand total what they're, I'm assuming the recommendations what they're recommending, which is what was requested. So then what's the grand total number? I'm on page 15 and 16.
I was just going to ask for the page number.
Patrick, is that a question you can answer?
No. There may be somebody from that committee in the meeting here this evening.
That's a very good point. Are there members of the Human Service Committee who are in the body this evening who can address that inquiry?
Stay about, you know, maybe 15 minutes.
It looks like John Kennedy?
John Kennedy, can you come on and answer that question from Sonia, please? I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, thank you.
I believe the question is, the amount of the request is the 300. I don't have the report right in front of me, but the higher amount, the 364,000, was what the agencies were asking for. It just totaled what they were asking. The 275 is the 1.4% of the prior year's budget that we are operating in. And what we had to do as a committee is basically chop 90, $89,500 from the requests. That's how we got to the 275. That is what the recommendations are for. I hope that's clear.
It is clear. Thank you very much.
So that 275, the grand total, is the actual grand total? Fiscal year '23 recommendations? Except that fiscal year '23 requests is only 261.
Is it possible the headers on the columns are just in the wrong columns? They should be switched.
You know, I think we get the gist that the requests were greater than the 1.4% of the budget. And so there is a scoring sheet that's detailed on page 15 that I'm assuming that the committee used to scale down the numbers to reach the budgeted amount of 1.4 of the total.
Which is the 275 number?
Yes.
In this article, we're going to approve those allocations. And then when do we talk about? I know we've had long conversations in the past about what percentage, or if we're going to set a percentage. Does that happen in this article too?
No, that's the beauty of Article 19.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, Andy Davis, do you have a question? Hey, Franz, I thought Andy was first.
I don't know. It just asked me to unmute, so I did.
Okay. Well, you want to go ahead then, because I don't seem to be hearing from Andy, and he can follow. Oh, here he comes. Andy Davis, please join us.
I'm still muted, hang on, Andy. There we go. It's a lot more complicated than simply unmuting. So, and we're kind of powerless with the timeline on it. I just wanted to say that it hasn't been articulated tonight, and some new members might not know that this is not a town committee. This is an art, the Human Services Committee was created by Representative Town Meeting. This is per Franz's question as well, or comment, that this was created by RTM to avoid a line item discussion on these grants, and that the total this year was also set by RTM. So this is actually designed by RTM. And I'm not taking a position on how to vote on it, I'm just talking about the structure of it, that this was an RTM decision to have this committee, and others who know the history could say when that happened. And I think it happened before my time of joining this. So it's a longstanding attempt to make the meeting more efficient and, quite frankly, fairer because the committee takes a lot more time than we could possibly take at RTM to discuss these requests and these allocations. And I would actually, wouldn't mind if a member of the committee were here tonight to talk about the overall process, the amount of meetings, the amount of research and contacting of agencies that goes into this, so that the body would really take that work seriously. And that's really a comment. I don't have a question. I'm also flummoxed by those columns, and I would hope that a member of that committee would come to RTM fully prepared to answer the question about those last three columns, which have left me quite confused. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. John Kennedy, would you like to be interrogated to give some more explanatory matter for the work that you did as a committee?
Yeah, actually, I think she called on Dave Minor, who is the Chair of the Committee, and he's next in line.
Thank you very much. David Minor, please join us. Hi, David, thank you so much for joining us. Tell us a little about your work effort that we admire so much.
Sure. Just in answer to Sonia's question about, you mentioned, Sonia, the 261 figure? That actually was from last year's report. That was last year's recommendation. And so there may be some confusion, I think, as was suggested, on the headings, and we'll have to take a look at those.
And then can you tell us a little more as... And then can you tell us a little more as, as Andy has asked about the level of effort each year? Yeah.
So we put together a summary, actually, of everything that, that, that we did. We reviewed requests from a total number of 37 agencies, which is a, an increase over the previous year. And not only in the number of agencies, but in the total amount. So that the, you know, the total amount of 364, that's an increase from the previous amount, which was the 261. So, you know, we saw a dramatic increase in the amount of requests in the, in the total amount of requests. We use a rubric scoring system, and all six members of the committee read each of the applications. And in this case, there were roughly a total number of pages which were reviewed of 685. So the, each application consists of answering questions about, about their program, the services that provide, with focus on Brattleboro residents and the assistance that they provide, as well as accounting details about the, about the program, their expenses as well as income. So we're trying to get a complete and total picture of, of each individual agency. We then take a look at them from, you know, we look, trying to, to measure and understand how they address problems of food insecurity, homelessness, disability, substance abuse and prevention, elder care, childcare, adolescent health and wellbeing, BIPOC, LGBTQ support and safety, as well as other services. So it, it's a cross section of service and needs that we're reviewing. We receive, and, you know, these 37 agencies really are covering each, each one of, each one of those of those areas that we're looking at. And we spend a number of hours of review, of reviewing it as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Franz Reichman, do you have an inquiry?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the answer to my previous question, and I wanted to extend that into somewhat more general discussion. I apologize for going kind of deep into the weeds here, but I think it's something that's of some importance. Now, David's answer to my previous question dealt with the nature of the Human Services Review Committee, which is that it was set up by Town Meeting to perform specific function. And that's why the, the mentioned amounts in the article itself are not changeable. That same explanation, however, might not apply to other items, other articles on the agenda where specific amounts of money are mentioned. Now, what I'm getting to here is the general principle that Town Meeting can change the amount of the budget as a whole, but cannot specify which amounts are to be spent in which ways as part of the budget. For example, if there's something that Town Meeting doesn't like, we can cut the budget, but we can't tell the Select Board not to spend money on that budget item if they can generate the, the money some other way from some other program, et cetera. So that's a well-established principle that we can't reach in and change the amounts which are not specified in the article. The article on the, the General Fund gives an amount, and we can change that amount. We can't change the components of that amount. My thought, and maybe contention, is that if an amount is specified in an article, it can be changed. If there's a total amount, then Representative Town Meeting can't break it down and mandate how the parts of the total amount are spent. But it seems to me, just as a basic principle of parliamentary procedure, if there's an amount specified in an article, then an amendment would be germane to change that amount that is specified. So, you know, this is kind of a legalistic principle. But I think realistically, it does come up in some contexts where there's a specific amount given, and yet Town Meeting is told, no, you can't, you can't change that part of this article. That part is not germane for any amendment. And to me, that's puzzling and, and perhaps, you know, not really participatory in the full sense. So that, that's what I was trying to get at by bringing up the Human Services Budget, but I think it also applies to other articles where an amount of money is specified, and I think should be subject to change because that's what we're voting on.
Thank you, Franz. I bet you Bob Fisher can comment on your question. Thank you, Bob, for raising your hand at just the right time.
Hi there. Can everybody hear?
Yes.
Okay. So David Gardenstein was and is correct with regard to how it is done with regard to the Human Services. That was formally done in 2019 by a formal article at Representative Town Meeting. So that being adopted by Representative Town Meeting, that is the process by which Human Services Agencies are funded. It had actually been done that way for many years prior to that. But the original action to create the Human Services Committee was done under a motion under other business. We operated that way probably for 10 or 15 years before, in 2019, making it official. So with, and the reason for that, and I understand Franz's concern here, but if you if you dealt with each and every Human Service Agency's request as a separate article, Representative Town Meeting would be much, much longer than it already is. And so it was deemed more expedient to delegate that authority to a committee, have the committee vet it, and then at Town Meeting, the overall number could be amended up or down, but not the individual allocations for each Human Service Agency. So I just wanted to give people the history on that, because that's the way it is done. Franz's other comment goes more to the budget article with regard to amending the budget either up or down. Anyone can suggest that a particular item in the budget be increased or decreased, but it's the overall, it's a number that is being voted upon in the budget. So it's not a bunch of numbers. It's one number, which is the budget. Now, the Select Board, if, if it's overwhelming that Representative Town Meeting says, cut the budget this way, or increase the budget that way, the Select Board can make those decisions, but it makes it at its own peril. So if, if the Select Board ignores Representative Town Meeting, well, those Select Board members may or may not be elected the following year. That's the check and balance with regard to how the budget process works. So thank you for listening, and I can answer further questions if need be.
Franz, I think, has a further question.
Yes, I want to make a distinction here. And, and I'm not only addressing the overall budget in the General Fund. The point I'm trying to make is that if a number appears in an article and we're voting on that article, then that number should be amendable, which it is in the General Fund budget, because there's only one number that appears. It's the total amount. And we can amend that amount. I accept that we can't reach further in, because those other numbers don't appear in the article. So I get that. But there are articles that do have separate numerical values as part of the article that we're voting on. And if those numbers appear in the article, I think they should be amendable by the body. That's the distinction I'm trying to make, and I fully accept what you said, Bob, and I appreciate that. The point I'm trying to make is just a little bit different.
And, and I, I get your point a little better now. Thank you. But with, to change that with regard to the Human Service Agency article, that would need to be warned for a Representative Town Meeting article like it was in 2019 in order to change that. If you're going to change the system that was adopted, you need to have it as a warned article to do that.
And how about articles that aren't Human Services and aren't the General Fund, but do have specific numbers in them?
Generally speaking, those would be, those would be amendable.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you both, gentlemen. Mr. McLaughlin?
It's on the same kind of flow. So I understand there are certain things that we can do as a town connected to the Charter. There are certain things that I think this, this, this action that was taken in 2019, I'm really curious about. Where, action that RTM has taken to define process or restrain itself in some way, and maybe Mr. Fisher can help me out with this. Like, if it's not in the Charter, where would I, where would I go to understand those types of things?
Yeah, I know Mr. Gardenstein spoke briefly about it, but Bob, would you like to continue?
Yes, I, I think the best place to go on that would be to look at the minutes of prior Representative Town Meetings. So the, the minutes to the annual meeting would give you that history. It's not how Town Meeting is. Obviously, the Town Charter talks to Representative Town Meeting, but it doesn't speak necessarily to the general how we vote on things like this, like the statute does. So I, I'm hoping that gives you a little bit of where to look for that, Mr. McLaughlin. If, if not, give a call or shoot an email to Jessica Stickler, and I'll try to follow up on that over this next week.
David Gardenstein, would you like to reiterate your comment about how Representative Town Meeting came to codify what we're talking about, Human Services?
I'll just note exactly what Bob said, that for many years, we had a single article, and by convention, the individual figures within that Human Services Budget were not subject to amendment. But as Bob indicated, that process had been developed during other business. And Mr. McLaughlin, probably on the Town website, you can find the 2020 Town Report. And if you look in the minutes, Mr. Fisher has identified that motion as having been adopted in 2019. And so in the 2020 Town Report, you'll find the language of that article, which formalized that process that had been adopted under other business.
Thank you, David.
I was just gonna say, just a quick follow up is just that I think it's interesting that we, that RTM, so if you're a newer member to RTM, there can be rules of the road that have been established by prior RTMs, that there is no singular place that you can go to to understand those rules of the road. And I think that's interesting, that that's the case. And I wonder if that, when I, I know in terms of town government, I go to the Charter, and I can understand the rules connected with most aspects of town government. But in this case, I have a previous RTM, which has created restraint around my ability to, to act on this particular article. And I have no ability to, to know what those particular rules of the road are, because there's no singular kind of clearinghouse for that information. So, so I appreciate the, the information, but it sounds like I need to go back and look at historical RTM minutes in order to understand, as a, as a, somebody who's only in their third year at RTM, how I'm restrained as a representative of the community.
Although, Zach, I will point you to the documentation on page 17, which discusses this next Article 19, which discusses the action that was taken place. Although this report says it took place in the Representative Town Meeting of 2020 and not 2019. So we need to clarify when that voting took place about the overall guidelines for Human Services spending. Melissand Cooley, do you have a question?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
To Zach's question, during, the Finance Committee has attempted over this past year to put together a guide to help with your question. And you can find that guide by going to the Finance Committee webpage on the, on the Town website. And in the right-hand column, there's a link that says 2022 RTM Finance Committee Budget Guide. That's different than the Finance Report. This guide is intended to help with questions about understanding generally how the budget works for the reason that you're, you've expressed. And so this is the first year that that document was done. We hope, you know, I'm on that committee. I hope it's helpful. But if there's things that that doesn't answer, there, I believe that we've put an email address, it's kind of a general committee email address at the end of that document so that you can add questions, because we want to know if the document is helpful for people to act, in acting as a guide. So that's where you can find it. And, yeah, hope it's helpful.
Great. Thank you, Melissand. Patrick, my video has stopped. Maybe you can plop me back on. And Andy Davis has a comment or a question. Andy?
Hi, can you hear me here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The whole question about which articles can only change the amount and which articles can change text is actually a Town Meeting issue throughout the state of Vermont. You cannot amend and a warned article such that the amendment introduces unwarned material. So if the, if the article was to purchase a dump truck and the Town Meeting decided that we'd rather spend that on solar collectors, we essentially would be creating a new article that had not been warned. So we can say, well, we'd really like you to spend it on solar collectors, which actually cost a little bit more, and that the Select Board could take that as advice. But that's an important thing, and it's covered in the Vermont Town Meeting Moderator Handbook. So this gets back to Human Services. I don't know the answer. If, if Town Meeting wanted to give money to an agency that was not in the warning, it could be interpreted that we were introducing unwarned material. But if we simply say we'd like to increase everything by 1% across the board, we're simply making a recommendation for the town to spend more money, but we're not changing the warned article, because you can't introduce unwarned significant changes in the form of amendments, and that's a statewide issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Chris Chapman, do you have a question or a comment?
Yeah. Thank you. I, I just wanted to make a comment in the form of a, of a thank you to the committee members who have done the work on Article 18, pulling out of 600 pages of, of materials submitted by these candidate applicants that I think they've done yeoman work, hugely, hugely complicated and difficult, time-consuming, using their very best judgment. I, I think it would be very appropriate at this time to say that I think I speak on the, for many. and expressing my thanks to those people for this work, which is as humane as humane ever gets. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Zach, did you have another question? Can I hear, I can't hear you.
There we go. Really quick, I just wanted to echo what Chris said, and just make sure that what I, what I previously, my inquiry about process is not about the committee doing this work. I agree, the committee is the right place to do the work, and not on the floor for multiple hours, trying to suss through who gets 50 more bucks than the other person does, because I like this group. So I, I totally agree with that in terms of process. My question was more just generally around that question of RTM restraining itself in certain ways, and how to know where that was. Thank you. I agree with Chris.
Thank you. Okay. Ian, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just before we move on from Article 18, I just wanted to request that the chart that is on page 16 of the annual report, if that can be corrected prior to the 19th and distributed to RTM and then put on the website. I don't know if I addressed that at Yoshi or whoever, but yeah, I think, I think I can see what the error is. But just so people are working off a correct chart, so that they can vote on it accurately, I think would be a good thing for us.
I think it's a matter of the headings, and I think the committee, if the committee got in touch with Jessica Stickler, the Town Manager's Administrative Assistant, then that can be corrected easily, and thank you for that comment. David, would you like to speak to this issue?
No, is all I was gonna say is absolutely, I was, I'll, I'll reach out to Jessica and we'll make sure that that gets corrected.
Thank you very much. Most appreciated. Yeah. All right, uh, let's move on to Article 19, to see if the town will direct the Select Board to include a specific amount of the FY24 budget to be allocated to human services funding. And if RTM chooses to establish a targeted amount as a percentage of the budget, we ask that the target for FY24 be expressed as a percentage of the FY23 budget, since that is a calculable number that will allow the Human Service Review Committee and the Select Board to adhere to the direction as, as provided by Representative Town Meeting. And the Select Board will suggest an amount equivalent to 1.4% of the FY23 budget for discussion on Saturday. Are there comments regarding that article? If not, I will move on to Article 20. Yes, Ian?
I wanted just to speak to this just for a moment. Just because I think it's hearing about people who are new to RTM, maybe not knowing the history. Very briefly, Article 19, we first implemented last year after hearing feedback that there needed to be a mechanism for RTM to give us a number or a percentile for human services funding, so that the Human Services Committee could do their job more effectively. So we tried it out last year, and it seemed to have worked, and so we've implemented again this year. And we've left the language, I think even a little more open this time than last time, hopefully to allow for robust conversation so that RTM can direct the committee effectively.
Thank you, Ian. All right. Any other Select Board members want to comment on that issue? All right, let's move to Article 20. Patrick Morland will discuss the, the overall annual budget. Thank you, Patrick. Patrick, you're muted.
If I may, Article 20 is the Mountain Home Park.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, why don't you discuss that then?
Happy to. So as many of the folks gathered here this evening will recall, this particular article relates to some work performed jointly between the town of Brattleboro and Mountain Home Park in West Brattleboro in the early 2000s. As you'll recall, their infrastructure was failing, and so Mountain Home approached the town to see if there was the ability to secure financing so that they could replace the water and sewer infrastructure on their private property. Two particular loans were required to accomplish this. One was a $3.2 million loan, which had a 20-year term. And the second was a $2.6 million loan, which had a 30-year term. The two loan payments to repay those, which are gathered from a special assessment on Mountain Home Park by the town, and then paid to the state of Vermont, totaled $223,7276. And that has been the amount which has been in this article for each of the previous years that this sum was collected. Then, last year, as part of a long-term sustainability work that the Town Planning Office was doing with Mountain Home and with Tri-Park, it was identified that they could use some additional cash flow to make other capital improvements. So the town and Tri-Park and the state worked together to refinance that debt, in some cases extending the duration of, or the term of the note. And in some cases, there was loan forgiveness. The net result of that is that this year's sum to be collected is only $131,698.86, which will provide the folks at Mountain Home with an annual cash flow savings of $91,577 that they can use to make other improvements in their infrastructure. And I'll turn it back to Liz.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions regarding this Mountain Home? Actually, it's a municipal pasture. All right, hearing none, let's move on to Article 21. Article 21, we'll see if the town will authorize the expenditure of $36,552 from program income, which is a revolving loan fund that disperses proceeds which originated as federal community development block grants as a contribution to the operation of the Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies, or SEVDS. SEVDS has requested funding at $3 per person from all the 27 towns that they serve. And therefore, the town of Brattleboro has been asked to provide this amount. And the funds go for a variety of items, including directly funding implementation of programs and projects serving the local community, businesses, and people. It includes the Welcoming Communities Program, which is welcoming refugees with the help of the ECDC, one of nine national refugee resettlement agencies. So that's how they intend to use their municipal funding. Are there any questions regarding that article? Seeing none, let's move on to Article 22. Article 22 is. Ah, here we are. Mr. Morland again, to see how much money the town will raise to defray all of its expenses and liabilities. Patrick?
Thank you. So, good evening again, everybody. Just a little bit of background. On November 2nd, staff submitted an earlier version of this budget to the Select Board for their consideration. The Board reviewed the document over nine separate public meetings, took input from the public, and then directed staff to make certain changes. On January 25th, the Select Board approved this budget and now recommend it for approval at the annual representative town meeting. The fiscal 23 general fund budget is in an amount of $20 million, $20,063,642. And just for those who are following along at home in the annual report, many of the comments that I'll make over the course of the next few minutes will be directed to things you can find on page 96 and 97. The two-page summary. So fiscal 23, once again, is $20,063,642. This is $379,651, larger than the fiscal 22 budget, an increase of 1.9%. Revenues, as you know, are derived mostly from property taxes. In fact, 79.79%. Property taxes in fiscal 23 are up 2.1% over fiscal 22. Other significant contributors to revenue are the town's two local option taxes. Meals and Rooms is forecast to be about 2.68 greater than fiscal 22. And Sales and Use, which continues to outperform our expectations, is budgeted in fiscal 23 for $1 million, which is 21% greater than the previous year. And based on the performance that it's demonstrating this year, that seems to be a very conservative number. Most other revenues for the town stay flat year over year. There are a couple of notable exceptions. Town clerk fees are up somewhat significantly, 50%, based in large part because the statutory, the, the fees that the town clerk's office issues for recording of things like land records went up by 50%. That in combination with an uptick in transactions explains the increase in the town clerk fees. Another notable increase in revenue is the town employees are contributing to a greater degree to the, to the healthcare program. So that's a, certainly a positive note. In terms of use of fund balance, the Select Board has directed $300,000. We talked about that to a degree earlier. And then the other sources of revenue for the general fund are two transfers, one from the parking fund and one from the utility fund. And these are intended to offset the administrative expense that those two enterprise funds have on the general fund. So the parking fund and the utility fund pay a small percentage of the town manager's salary, the finance director's salary, et cetera. That's revenue. Expenses. Town of Brattleboro is a service organization, and these services are delivered largely by people. Not surprisingly, the overwhelming majority of expenses come from salaries and benefits. In fiscal 23, a total of $8,266,631 have been budgeted for staff salaries. This represents fully 41% of the overall expense budget. Adding another $3.6 million for employee benefits itself, 18% of the total budget, we find that together salaries and benefits combine for 60% of the overall town budget. I'll speak first to salaries. Salaries are up 4.2% over fiscal 22. One thing I'd like to point out is that all four of the town's collective bargaining agreements were renegotiated at the end of last year. The intention there was to provide the new town manager with a year to be able to get to know the town, get to know the staff, and get to know the organization before needing to dive directly into collective bargaining agreements. Each of the agreements was therefore extended for one year. In all cases, a 3% cost of living component was used. But this is in addition to any step schedule, which is how, what, which helps to explain why this number is greater than 3% because some, if not most, staff will be eligible for some kind of step increase. In some cases, the step schedule itself was modified, such as with the police department and with the fire department. In these two instances, the town removed the lowest possible step, often a training step at a lower than you might anticipate rate of pay because someone was training. But by removing the lowest possible step, the town was able to dramatically increase the rate at which it could advertise for starting police officers and firefighters. This is important, given the challenges the town currently has in filling open positions. In other cases, such as with the administrative staff, a step schedule was introduced for the very first time. If we take a look at the administrative staff as they exist in each of the smaller departments, but also in the Rec and Parks Department, it was easy for the administration to recognize that we had wildly different pay for what was very similar work being performed in each of these departments. What had happened is that as new positions were added over the years, they were brought on with whatever salary made sense at the time, given the economic conditions of that particular day. From that point forward, with only cost of living adjustments added, it meant that inequalities were perpetuated over time. With this group, the administration, and with a great deal of help from HR Director Sally Nix, was able to work through these positions and establish a predictable framework for staff to be paid, based on the level of responsibility, the need for the use of independent judgment, and the level of risk that the position, the position represents to the organization. The new wage scale meant that some folks in that particular bargaining unit received a significant salary increase. But it also meant that some received very little, and in one case, no wage increase at all. The new scale was adopted by the union, and it was approved by the Select Board, and represents what we believe to be a real step towards equity and not just equality. In addition to the two new collective, excuse me, in addition to the collective bargaining agreements, there are two new positions included in the budget. The first is an HR assistant that will perform day-to-day administrative tasks for the HR department. This will relieve the HR director of these responsibilities so that she can focus on hiring, exit interviews, employee training, discipline, investigations, policy development, benefits, and advancing the town's diversity, equity, and inclusion work. The HR assistant will take responsibility for overseeing some of the Kronos modules that the town utilizes, providing administrative support to the DEA Committee, maintain all employee records, coordinate HR activities with payroll, and provide benefit implementation and orientation to new staff. The second new position covered in this particular budget is a police evidence technician. The evidence technician will take responsibility for the intake, maintenance, retrieval, return, delivery, destruction, and tracking of all police evidence property. These are tasks currently performed by sworn officers in the Criminal Investigation Division. In reviewing the operations of the department, Chief Hardy reviewed the activity of the CID and recognized that on a regular year, the Detectives Division will investigate 36 death investigations. They're likely to investigate 61 sex crime investigations, including internet crimes against children. They'll investigate commercial robberies, arsons, assaults, domestic assaults, and multi-jurisdictional drug investigations. They'll perform a number of internal investigations and perform all background investigations for new officers. Evidence management, she concluded, could be performed by a non-sworn employee, freeing up sworn officers to focus on the investigations required of them. The administration and the Select Board agreed, and these two positions have been incorporated into the budget. Moving next to benefits. The cost of employee benefits is proposed to increase by $191,000 or 5.6% this year. Some of that is limited to small increases for social security or other retirement benefits. But the vast majority of the impact is felt from the town. But the vast majority of the impact is felt from the town's health insurance program. Initially, the renewal quote that the town received from Blue Cross Blue Shield came in at fourteen point six percent just for premiums and ten point five percent overall, if you include other lines like the HRA. By working with our partners at the Richards Group, we were able to consider several plan changes, including raising the town's level of self-insurance, which lowered the premiums by more than the increase seen in the HRA. Additionally, the employees were picking up a greater share of the responsibility for the premium. Additional plan changes were incorporated that put some modest limits on out-of-network benefits and plan-covered redundant medication options. Once fully implemented, these changes reduced the cost overall of the renewal down to seven point two percent and only six point nine percent for the premiums. Moving down to departmental expenses. Incidentally, these are in each of the departments that you're you're all familiar with. If you exclude the any and all lines that go along with salaries, these are the departmental expenses. In most departments, including town manager's office, finance, HR, planning, facility maintenance, and dispatch, there are no increases at all to departmental expenses. There are some. The town clerk's office is seeing increasingly complicated elections obligations and has needed to increase elections funding to address these. In addition, there are some cost increases in software licenses. The fire department is going to be conducting a strategic planning assessment this this year and has also added a line for medications to recoup, to fund, rather, medications that are provided when the town staff respond in an EMS circumstance. There was a significant departmental increase in the police department by a little more than ninety-three thousand dollars. This is the net of all changes to departmental expenses, most of which are reductions. The largest change, of course, is a one hundred thousand dollar transfer to the Community Safety Fund, which this fiscal year is funded through the savings of two officers that we don't anticipate being able to hire in this particular fiscal year. The department has a roster of twenty-seven sworn officers. And it is our expectation that the most we will have on salary in fiscal twenty-three will be twenty-five officers. So the funds for the two other positions, roughly fifty thousand dollars each, can be set aside in this particular year. By keeping the transfer in the police department budget, we continue to show the cost of a twenty-seven officer department, even as we only anticipate having twenty-five officers on the payroll. This is important for year-over-year comparisons. Moving to the Department of Public Works, we see that there are many small increases across their budget. The largest ones involve compliance with the state's new stormwater obligations. And there is a modest increase in recreation and parks. This relates to the need to repair headstones in the cemeteries, and there's also some plans for crack ceiling on tennis courts. The next section in the general services. There are mostly decreases. General Services is down due to the website. As you recall, the town funded the website improvement to the tune of seventy-five thousand dollars last year. And that's obviously not going to need to carry forward into next year. Debt service is being reduced by like a hundred and forty-nine thousand. This is the this is the end of the Honeywell. That's the savings from the Honeywell project, because we're no longer going to need to pay that. Risk management is down also, and this is due to a good deal of work that has gone on by many of the town staff over the years to reduce our workers' comp obligations by better managing employees that are out sick and working to help bring them back to work sooner, and also by paying really close attention to safety. We've been able to project a decrease in our risk management obligations. In total, General Services is going to be down three hundred thousand dollars year-over-year. Finally, there are the transfers. And I'll I'll address capital in just a minute. I'd like to start with what's called the Fossil Free Facilities Fund. This is a fund established by the Select Board in fiscal twenty-one and funded out of funds from fiscal twenty-one, and there was also funds placed in it from fiscal twenty-two. Fiscal twenty-three will be the first year that it is budgeted for. And the Select Board approved seventy thousand dollars. The Fossil Free Facility Fund is intended to advance the town's energy savings and decarbonization, I believe is the appropriate term, to reduce the town's reliance on fossil fuels and to reuse the to reduce, rather, the amount of carbon that our activities emit into the atmosphere. This is not intended to be our exclusive commitment to these pursuits, rather, where there's an instance of, you know, the town was going to replace something and do it to this degree. The the fossil-free facilities funds would have additional resources that would be available to help improve upon and exceed what we otherwise might normally do. That's a little complicated, but thank you for bearing with me. Lastly, I will deal with the transfer to capital, and this is this can be found on page one seventeen. I'll move there myself. The capital request for fiscal twenty-three is, as it is every year, a combination of projects and vehicles and equipment replacement. The projects come at us one at a time. The vehicles, as I think most folks will recall, are today on a twenty-five-year replacement plan, which can be found on the town's website, where, you know, in every year, we try and manage a proper replacement that allows for a slow and steady increase over time, rather than giant fluctuations in capital needs. Particularly, what drove this was the exorbitant expense associated with replacing fire engines. So as you'll notice, just just pointing to that out. Within the vehicles and equipment, there is now a fire truck reserve fund. And each year, there's a sum set aside for that, such that when a fire truck comes along and needs to be replaced, the funds are already in place to purchase that. Other equipment being replaced in this particular year are, this is the second year of a payment for to replace the radio system for the fire department. The fire department is also purchasing a replacement of a twelve-lead EKG along with a replacement of car number one. That would be the chief's car. Under General Services, this is the town's commitment to replacing computer software. This is town-wide at forty-six thousand dollars. Incidentally, we made a decision, I believe, last year was the first that we implemented this, is that we replace computers now with laptops. If there's one thing that COVID has taught us is that we need to be nimble and be prepared sometimes to head home. And so a computer replacement is a little more expensive than it had been previously. The police department will be replacing two cruisers, as it does each year. Each of these two, Car Six and Car Two are from twenty-seventeen. As folks will recall, we replace these on a five-year rotation. Also, in the capital request is thirteen thousand dollars for ballistic vests. Probably the largest single ticket is a greater replacement from the Department of Public Works. This is a greater which has been in service in our community since two thousand and five. Cost for that item is three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Public Works will also be replacing a twenty-thirteen dump truck and some electronic signage that I think many folks will have seen displayed, particularly when snow is being cleared downtown. There's some electronic signage that enables information to the public. With the projects, we have street paving at four hundred thousand dollars. This is a the sum set aside for the select board for a street paving. Bicycle infrastructure, twelve thousand dollars. This is a match to a Vtrans grant that will be used to expand bike lanes in Western Avenue. There is two hundred and eight thousand dollars in sidewalk replacement. Initially, when staff proposed this budget, that was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. As it turns out, over the course of the budget, the Public Works Department put a body of work on South Main Street out to bid, and right now, we're finding that costs are coming in much higher than we anticipated. And in that case, eighty-eight thousand dollars higher. So in order to enable the town to stay on schedule and move forward with a greater number of sidewalk replacements, this was raised to two hundred and eight thousand dollars over the course of this budget. Lastly, the fire alarm system at the Brooks Memorial Library is in real need of replacement. And so thirty thousand dollars has been set aside for that project. And with that, I'll turn it over to Liz.
Thank you very much, Patrick. Are there comments regarding Mr. Moreland's presentation of the budget? All right. Well, yes.
Great appreciation for an excellent summary that wasn't overly long or under detailed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Marta Dosage, you have a question?
Yeah, I actually was just looking at, you know, the future fire truck reserve fund line item. And I recalled, Peter, oh, well, I don't remember if it was a year, two, or three ago, talking about changing us to create these reserve funds instead of using credit. And I was wondering, maybe I missed it, but are there other reserve funds like this, or can we get an update on, you know, like whether or not this is something we're going to be doing ongoing, if there are the savings that, you know, can be realized from this? And I just was wondering, like, would our new town manager continue along those lines or expand these kind of reserve funds instead of having the town purchase things on credit?
Mr. Manali, you've been interrogated.
Thank you. So, yeah, well, you know, I'm going to have to examine what the budget is for next year, and we haven't had a chance to start that process. But I know that we have talked about reserves funds and the benefits of them. Just knowing that, you know, the reserve fund, you know, at the end of the day, is paying at cost, so we're not having to borrow for it. It's not paying any interest. So that's the difference there, and that's that ultimately is the is the difference, a long term. It means that, you know, just like you paying cash for like a car, right? Like, but now what we're doing is we're saving up for that that big purchase instead of having to pay that, like, for instance, the greater three hundred and fifty thousand, like, if we had done a reserve fund, put aside money for like fifty thousand a year instead of bonding.
What else do we have, other than the future fire truck reserve fund?
That's what Patrick and I don't know as of right now. I mean, Patrick, if you want to be able to answer that question.
Before Patrick starts, I would just, Marta, if you if you, there's also the twenty-five-year capital plan, which is on the town website that speaks to many of these items that I think is the that Daniel's holding up, which is really the key to this type of service. But let me have Patrick answer more fully. Patrick?
Sure. So at the present time, the only, you know, reserve fund of this type is for the fire engines. And and the reason for that is they're just so tremendously expensive. And so in 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 years past, right, you would have a fire truck come along, and let's say it's eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It would crowd out real capital needs of many of the other departments and in other areas of the town. But because you had to replace the fire truck, because it was, you know, on its last legs, it would crowd everything out. So thus the need for a reserve fund to be able to set aside a suitable amount of money. That suitable amount of money is predicted in the twenty-five-year plan each year to contribute. Just just like Town Manager Manali said, it's a it's sort of a savings account. You set that money aside, that money can earn interest for you while it's accruing rather than paying interest to borrow that.
Great. Yeah, my question was, so right now, the Fire Truck Reserve Fund is the only project we are doing that for?
Yes, that's correct.
And where on the website? Can, what was the name of the report, the twenty-five-year planning again?
The twenty-five-year capital plan. Patrick, do you know where Marta can find that on the website?
You know what? Honestly, I don't. I know it's on the website. I I'm not honestly sure where it is. Marta, I'd be happy to email a copy of that to you tomorrow. And
not like I'm going to go written detail, but I'm just real curious, because I do remember that presentation and an info meeting a while back. And when I noticed that line item, I'm like, oh, I haven't heard any more about the reserve fund idea since that one meeting where Peter Oll kind of introduced the idea and explained the benefits to the town.
Okay. Well, we'll be happy to answer your questions in the future. Thank you, Marta. Christopher, do you have a comment? Mr. Kane?
Sorry, that took me a little bit. Yeah, no, I was I was curious, like, why the ballistic missiles kind of deal? Why would the police need that? Why would the police need that?
They're bulletproof vests.
Sorry?
It's a, from my understanding, that is the term that we commonly refer to as a bulletproof vest.
Right. What what? Not to my knowledge, has a police offered officer died?
Maybe they had their vest on.
Did they?
Let's see, is Chief Hardy on the call? Perhaps you could answer Mr. Kane as to why the Bradlboro Police needs bulletproof vests?
No, Chief Hardy is not on the call.
I am absolutely on the call. Thank you.
Oh, there you are. I remember you.
I will tell you this, the bulletproof vests is within the budget because bulletproof vests expire after, I believe, five years. And some of the vests that we now have have way gone beyond that five-year limit. And vests tend to not be as accurate as they need to be after the five years. So that's the reason why that stays in the budget after a certain amount of time, because they are no longer effective after that.
Did they expire?
Yes, they do.
No, did the ones that you have expire?
Yes, they have.
How recently?
Each vest has been bought at different times. But what I've seen is that a numerous amount of them have actually overextended the time that they should have been replaced.
Thank you, Norma. All right, Mr. McLaughlin.
I just want to check, is it is it safe to assume, as we, like many places in Vermont, struggle to recruit officers, that officers who come to us would expect that a bulletproof vest would be an expectation as of of coming to a force, that that would be a baseline default expectation of being a law enforcement officer. of being a law enforcement officer, especially as we're trying to recruit in a period of time where not a lot of people want to be law enforcement officers?
Chief Hardy?
Yes, sir. That is one of the basic pieces of equipment that we want to supply to new officers that are coming on to the department. That, that is not a major ask, that is a basic thing that we would apply, supply to them.
Thank you very much. All right, let us move on to the last, oh, Sonia, you have a question?
Hi. Sorry, I've been trying to figure if my questions were questionable. I, I have two. One is a question about the fact that the website was budgeted for last year and it's not going to be budgeted for this year. I haven't seen the budget, the, sorry, the website look that different. Has the work already happened, or is that happening before the end of the fiscal year?
No, that the work has, has not been accomplished yet, but the RFP is being prepared and the work is, is, will be accomplished soon. And someone might want to give a more intelligent answer to that, like Yoshi. Thank you.
Or Ian.
Yeah, we have the, the RFP should be going out in the next couple of weeks. So that should, hopefully, if anybody's on this call too, it's just for it. So we should have that out.
Cool. So the money will probably get spent this fiscal year, which is why we're not.
Well, it'll be allocated this year. Not sure if it'll be spent, but the idea is to get, we'll have it allocated for this year and hopefully have a vendor within the next couple of months.
Awesome. That's very exciting and a relief that, that money didn't go into the current website and it still looks exactly.
No, 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 the current website is the third website.
Reasonable question.
My second question is, Patrick said that there was an increase in fees that the town clerk received. And it sounded like mostly because there's just been a lot of buying and selling. But then in the Finance Committee report, it also talks about a really big increase in fees because of basically penalties, because people aren't paying their property taxes on time that they assume is related to COVID. And I'm just wondering if there's a way, like, is that, is that someplace in the budget where you can see which part is from which, or like, I don't know, is there a little bit more explanation for that?
Patrick, would you like to answer that, or should we ask Hillary?
I think I can answer that. I will certainly do my best to. If you look on, it's not page one. Revenues. In the larger budget, it would have to be page 98. Page 98, by the way, yeah, there you go, page 98. Down at the bottom, you've got revenues for the town clerk's office. And if you look at the third line down, it's called Town Clerk Fees. And that has grown from fiscal '22, 105,000 is projected to be 150,000 in fiscal '23. Also, you noted that there was an increase in interest penalties and collection charges. That is true. That's on the same page under the second grouping called Taxes. And that is somewhat related, I think it, it's fair to say that some of that is related to COVID. I also happen to know that a good deal of the increase that was seen in fiscal '21 was as a result of a particular business that went to tax sale and a significant amount of collection charges were collected by the town because they elected to use their cash for other purposes rather than to pay their taxes. So while it may appear that there is a large-scale increase, a lot of that increase I have learned can be attributable to one particular client or one particular taxpayer. That has since, that has since paid all their taxes and paid all their back utility bills and is back current. So.
Thank you very much.
Well, thanks.
Daniel?
Thanks. I just wanted to chime in that when Patrick was talking about town clerk fees way back when, one of the reasons he talked about an increase is could be fees themselves have increased. So I wouldn't want to tell too simple a story that the fees have increased because more people are buying property here, and that's the only reason that, you know, that may well be a piece of it. And, yeah, I mean, I thought Patrick's answer about the interest and penalty on taxes was interesting, too. I just wanted to say one thing back to Marty's looking for that document. And I found it. It's very easy. You go to brattleboro.org, because I, like Sonia, I'm frustrated by our website sometimes, but I'm determined to make it work. So brattleboro.org, right on the right-hand side, it says FY23 Budget, it's plain as can be. And then there's FY23 Capital Equipment Replacement Program. And if you click that, you get a really big spreadsheet that's fun to look at.
It is fun. Thank you, Daniel. And I also, I think that those fees were raised as a, as a statewide issue, those clerk fees. All right, now we have the last three items. So moving right along. Article 23 is the sale of Union Station to the Brattleboro Museum and Art Center. And after several years of negotiation, the Select Board voted unanimously to approve a purchase and sale agreement with the Brattleboro Museum and Art Center for the museum building and grounds contingent on the approval of Representative Town Meeting. And so the museum has occupied the facility for decades with a one-year per, $1 per year lease agreement. And the town would pay $7,000 for regular building maintenance and is responsible for all capital maintenance. And there's another 19 years remaining on the lease. But the transfer of ownership will relieve Brattleboro taxpayers of any future financial liability for the site, including the retaining wall and freeing the town to devote capital projects dollars to other more essential town infrastructure. And so the purchase price would be a dollar and the museum would accept the property as is, including the need for a new roof, which is quite expensive. So the article is to see if the town will authorize the sale and conveyance of the Brattleboro Union Station Museum Building and associated land to the Brattleboro Museum and Art Center for $1 and other valuable consideration as set forth in the purchase and sale contract between town of Brattleboro and the Brattleboro Museum and Art Center to authorize the town manager to sign any necessary documents. Okay, any questions regarding that? Mr. Kane, do you have a question regarding the museum sale?
Yes, so this is the building complex across from the museum. Am I, am I correct?
No, this is the actual museum building itself.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next article, Article 24. To see if the town will expand the purpose of the Agricultural Land Protection Fund and rename it to the Brattleboro Architectural and Food Systems Revolving Loan and Grant Fund. And the reason for this is that the fund has not been used in many years. And a recent survey of the local farmers revealed that it's because there's a lack of knowledge about the fund and the narrow scope of the fund's purchase. And so after consideration, the Agricultural Advisory Committee is recommending that the funds be reconceptualized to be made more relevant. And so because they favor making the fund available for a wider array of food system-related expenses by providing small grants and loans for working capital and business management in addition to purchasing real property rights in order to protect agricultural lands. And because this fund was initially established by an active RTM, any significant alteration of the purpose of the fund also requires action by the RTM. So if this article is passed, the Select Board will adopt new guidelines for expenditure of funds. And they'll rename the fund to the Brattleboro Agriculture and Food Systems Revolving Loan and Grant Fund. And the fund currently has a balance of $52,395.96. Any comments regarding the Agricultural Land Protection Fund? Seeing none. We'll go to our last article, which is a tax stabilization agreement for alternative energy generating plants. And to see if the town would authorize the general authority to the Select Board to enter into tax stabilization agreements with alternative energy generating plants to fix and maintain the valuation of such properties on the grand list. And there is a statute which allows municipalities to enter into contracts to stabilize municipal portion of the property tax for certain types of properties, including commercial, industrial, farmland, and for alternative energy generating plants. With this article, RTM is asked to grant the Select Board with the general authority to negotiate and enter into such stable tax stabilization agreements. And the impetus of this article was based on a meeting warning requested by Tom Zikowski to the Select Board. And statements in support of this were provided by the Conservation Committee, the Agricultural Advisor Committee, the Energy Committee, and the Planning Commission. And so Article 25 does not address specific details of a tax stabilization plan, but allows the Select Board to determine the program's procedures, criteria, eligibility, and terms. And again, this is for alternative energy generating plants. Any comments regarding this action? Seeing none. You know, Article 26 is the very last one, and I think we all know what it is. It's to transact any other business that may lawfully come before the meeting. And again, I thank you all for your attention. And as I mentioned in the beginning, there are several additional items or events that take place before town meeting, which is on the 19th. There is the Technical Informational Meeting on Saturday, this Saturday, between 8:30 and 10:30 in the morning. And there's the Presentation of Robert's Rules by Andy Davis on Monday evening from 6:30 to 7:30. I have one more comment from Mr. O'Brien. Mr. O'Brien, do you have a concluding comment you'd like to make?
Yeah, hi, I was just wondering if there's a minimum or standard amount of time between asking for a response and then closing.
I look for the little hands and I see the little hands. That's about it. So if you have a comment about a, an article that you were not given time to discuss and you would like to discuss it now, you may.
No, it was just, just more of a procedural question, and this is my, you know, first go around. So some things felt like they were a little bit longer, some things a little bit shorter. And I just didn't know if there was a minimum or standard that we were going.
I think I, if I see hands and, and I will pause. If it's, if I sense that there's no comment, I'll move right along. So anyway, I thank you all very much. And I will remind anyone that if there is additional information to transact any other business, that's the last item, I would again remind you to present that information in email form to Jessica Stickler, the Town Manager's Administrative Assistant. And that will go to the Newtown Moderator. I have two more questions. Ricky Rosati?
So are we anticipating the chat to be enabled so that people can make points of order in a timely and effective way through the moderator?
No, the chat will not be open. Mr. Garden?
How will points of order be deciphered?
Mr. Gardenstein, would you like to address that comment?
We are hoping to be able to open the chat function to be directed just to the host to allow points of information and points of order to be raised. I'm not positive that's going to be possible, but we're hoping to make that happen.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't that be possible? And if, if it's not allowed for, for an, for an explained reason, then what is the alternative?
We face open meeting law violation issues if the chat function is open for general use. But if we can use it for this limited purpose, and if it's technologically possible, we're going to try to make it available for points for points of information. The issue was raised with the technical support people for town meeting for the first time just a couple of days ago. And we're still working on seeing whether that's possible.
Well, if that is for an explained reason decided to be not possible, and if there is no alternative way to distinguish points of order, then aren't we by, like, open meeting law not allowed to have a meeting because we need to be able to distinguish points of order? David?
Robert's Rules of Order govern the procedure at town meeting. But those rules of order are subject to being modified, particularly because of the need to protect health and safety and have the remote meeting. We would way prefer to be able to have in-person meeting where people can interrupt to make points for points of information. That's not feasible this year, and we're doing our best to replicate what would be the process at a in-person meeting to the best of our ability.
So what I'm hearing you say is that for our own health and safety, we may be denied to have points of order made?
Ricky, I think that I've answered the question. Thank you.
I was asking you to re-clarify.
Mr. Kane, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Ricky, we, we have a chat going on and I'm sure you're allowed it. This is undemocratic. So much so that you are unprepared for what's coming. And I can't wait for you all to leave.
Thank you for your comment. All right, we're ready to adjourn. Oh, Austin Rice.
I just wanted to thank the Select Board and town staff for a really informative evening and looking forward to RTM. And please proceed with the adjournment.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Austin.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Thank you to PC. Thank you to PCTV and all the technical support and, and of course, our interpreters. I'll see you all at town meeting, thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.